Order at six oh one P M. I'm going to ask our city treasurer to do the invocation today. And I'm gonna ask our city clerk assistant or worker Diana Kukulon to do the pledge of allegiance, please.
Alright, can you all bow our heads? Let's be thankful for the great contribution that African Americans have brought to this country. In honor to of African American History Month. And please, you know, help us to become closer and be a more tightly knit community. Thank you.
Hi, everybody face the nearest flag and put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the five United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, sir. Mister clerk, can you please do the roll call?
Yes, I can. Councilmember Montero?
Present.
Councilmember Patterson?
I'm here.
Councilmember Rayce English?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Valentine?
Here.
And Mayor Vargas?
Here.
All are present.
Excellent. Oral communication guidelines, please?
Yes, pursuant to government code section five four nine five four point three. Our remarks shall be addressed to the city council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communications, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any item not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
Okay, good. And we do ask, we do ask that the callers or the people addressing the city council be respectful and follow those guidelines, please. So go ahead, Mister clerk.
Mister Mayor, we have received one call from a resident that stated he is against marijuana dispensaries in Hawthorne. Received various petitions against cannabis retail stores in Hawthorne that were forwarded to the council and to the cannabis program working committee. We have five speakers tonight for oral communications.
Go ahead.
The first speaker is Chief Ishi.
Go ahead, Chief.
Good evening, council, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and council members. It's an honor here tonight to introduce some of our newer officers, new officers that are working in on training right now. And I thought it'd be a great opportunity for us to, for you to meet them and get some of their stories. So without taking too much time, because we actually have quite a bit here, I'd like to pass the camera over and then just have them introduce themselves.
Good evening. My name is Officer Kobian. I've been working here at the police department for about five years now. I did a parking enforcement for approximately four years and I'm happy to be here. I am a local. I lived in the city of Lenox for most of my life. So I'm right next door and now I live in the city of Hawthorne, so I'm home. Thank you.
So it's possible that you gave myself and Councilmember Patterson our tickets?
It's very possible that I told you.
Welcome, welcome.
Hello, my name is Officer Chris McPeters. I've been here for almost three years now. I worked parking enforcement here. I grew up in Hawthorne area. Very excited to come back here and contribute back to the community.
Welcome.
Hello, everyone. My name is Officer Trace Lopez. I was born in Grayson, the city of Gardena. And I'm excited to be an employee for the city of Hawthorne. Prior to this, I was a worker at Gardena as a jailer and a cadet at Al comunino College. So now I'm really excited to be here with the city of Hawthorne.
Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Officer Evelyn Ortiz. I'm twenty-five years old. I was an explorer at the age of seventeen for the city of Hawthorne. I went to Lipus Elementary School, Hawthorne Middle School, and I graduated from Hawthorne High School. I worked parking enforcement here as well and I'm excited for this opportunity that the city of Hawthorne and Chief Ishi have given me.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Officer Chin Tam Patel. I'm from Thousand Oaks area. I've been in the Marinkle for thirteen and a half years, currently selling the reserves. And I'm just excited to be here with the city of Hawthorne and I can't wait to further my future doing that selling things.
Welcome to the city.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Officer Jose Ramirez and I am from Atlantic Beach, California. And I was a cell sponsor of the academy and I'm grateful to be here. I'm grateful that the city of Hawthorne gave me a chance to fulfill my dreams and I'm just excited to get to work.
Welcome.
Thank you.
It's amazing. They're all so well spoken, you know, right out the gates. So very proud of them to be here. They're on training right now. And you know, these are, these are folks that have been with us for a long time. Know the culture, know our community, and we're really excited to be here. So I just wanted to take a few minutes to introduce them as they stand behind me here to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next Diana has our next speaker.
Yeah, our next speaker is Doug. Doug, are you there?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead and begin.
Okay, thank you very much. My name is Doug Chasky. Thank you for listening. I've been a homeowner in Hawthorne since nineteen eighty-five. I like the town a lot. Some of the direction we're going, we're happy with. And I found out a couple of weeks ago that the city of Hawthorne wants to legalize marijuana. Well, personally, I don't like the idea. Then as I did some research, I realized it's not a good idea. In my opinion, my academic opinion. So I started doing more research and I saw that Hawthorne has got a flyer out that says that citizens of Hawthorne have voted to legalize marijuana. Well, I voted every election. I'd never heard of this. My neighbors have never heard of this. So where is that coming from? So I went ahead and did a little bit more research and I found out that we spent money hiring a consultant on marijuana dispensaries that happens to own a marijuana dispensary. I mean, to me, that's like hiring liquor store owners to see if we should have liquor stores in Hawthorne. I mean, what kind of information are we going to be getting from that? So bottom line, it sounded so bad to me. I went to the activist that alerted me on this marijuana thing and asked, I want to help. I want to do something because this does not sound like Hawthorne is going in the right, in the right direction. And definitely seems something is wrong, fraudulent or something. So he gave me some petitions. And he said, try to, try to activate, you know, talk to your neighbors and see what we can do. The petition says, the petition against cannabis retail stores in Hawthorne, California. The signed petition shall ensure Hawthorne State Central Council immediate halt to the cannabis program and its research and development. Prohibit retail sales of marijuana stores, dispensaries in Hawthorne, California. Furthermore, the undersigned agrees against cannabis dispensaries. The locations in the city including but not limited to shops, schools, churches, homes, daycare centers, that type of thing. The undersigned also opposes marijuana store and lounge consumption in the city of Hawthorne, California. Understood, accepted, and agreed by the undersigned. And so I took this, these petitions and I started walking down my, my street, one hundred twenty-first street. And I went from Inglewood-
Thirty-second, Doug.
Okay, bottom line is I went, I found out twenty-four people in less than an hour. Twenty-four people, never heard of this, this situation, we're legalizing it and we're against it. And then one of my neighbors got ten more signatures on her own. So I got thirty-four people saying this is not right. They don't like it in two blocks on one twenty-first street. So there's something wrong and, and we got a hundred nineteen-
Three minutes is up.
That's it?
Yeah, thank you.
I talked too slow, I guess. Alright, thank you for your time and bottom line is this is not right, in my opinion.
Okay, thank you.
What else?
Mister Vergara, you have three minutes. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Vargas and Councilwoman Olivia Valentine and the rest. Last week, an official flyer on Hawthorne, Hawthorne letterhead was circulating on social media. It read, and I quote, "The citizens of Hawthorne voted to legally allow cannabis retail in the city." This is a lie. Although you corrected the issue, the damage has been done. It was misleading and reckless information to our community. So again, I say, the city of Hawthorne does not have cannabis dispensaries, marijuana stores, pot shops, or cannabis lounges. And we never voted for cannabis retail. Furthermore, California laws does not require cities to allow such cannabis stores in their city. So cannabis sales are still not allowed in Hawthorne. Now, as residents, we acted and started our own petition to immediately halt the cannabis program study and deny cannabis dispensary in Hawthorne. My understanding is that further city clerk, it will confirm that you have in front of you all one hundred and nineteen West signatures of Hawthorne residents demanding that you immediately stop the cannabis program and deny cannabis retail in Hawthorne. Shame on you if you don't adhere to our demand. I am disappointed in the newly elected city council members, their marginalized accomplishments, in their fashion, and immoral behavior specifically on the matter as they are desperate trying to use inaccurate information to bring cannabis retail to our community. One thing is clear. Come reelection, you three will not get my vote.
Sir, please address the council as a body.
To conclude, I support Olivia Valentine and Alex for being the voice of reason and for protecting the city against negative financial impact in our community.
Sir, you have fifteen seconds?
I welcome any comments, any conversation, a couple jokes to discuss this matter further. But I also hope that you guys reach out to all of the associations out there and give us our time-
Sir, your three minutes are up, sir.
Thank you very much for your time. Good night.
Good night.
Next, go ahead, the next person.
Okay, next we have Lisa. Lisa, go ahead.
Hi, good evening. Good evening, Mayor Vargas and council members. My name's Lisa Aguilar and I'm here tonight to state my opposition to legalizing cannabis dispensaries here in Hawthorne. As it is, it has been said, stated, and proven before that our police department isn't big enough to handle an increase in crimes by the proposal of marijuana to be sold here in our small boutique city six miles big, six miles in radius. It's already too condensed. Is anyone thinking about the safety of our children, our seniors who are most vulnerable? We are supposed to collectively care for one another. There is no sense of community in this senseless proposal. Common sense doesn't seem so common here. A tax measure voted back in November of twenty twenty. The key word is, if I must spell it out, until they are permitted. No one has voted for cannabis dispensaries here in Hawthorne. We, the people, have more common sense to agree than to agree to place cannabis shops here in Hawthorne. The demographic studies have shown that we are not worthy of a trade or joke. But we are worthy of cannabis dispensary? What an insult. Thank you to the big three proponents that are representing our city. There are no doubt that there will be more Hawthorne headliners our way due to incompetent leadership that don't strive for better standards of living. The people of Hawthorne deserve better. They need, stop misleading us and stop missing forming that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mister Ruben Sanchez. Mister Sanchez, you have three minutes.
Hi, good evening. This is Ruben Sanchez. He, him, his. I'm president of North Hawthorne Community Association. You know, I wanted to thank you guys for the flyer correction on the town hall, the cannabis town hall meeting. I appreciate that. As you know, it caused some issues right now and a lot of, a lot of people are upset. As you know, I'm gonna leave it up to the mayor to pretty much clarify the, the measure C C. That's his job and he needs to clarify this.
Sir, please address the council as a body.
Obviously, that the committee is not, you know, we, we, I know there's a committee behind this as well. And right now, what we're requesting also is we're passing a link to the city Hawthorne's website. And there, we will want all the names of the committee members with their full names, with their photos. Also, the consultants, their real names, no abbreviations. We want to get, we want to know their BBAs, their LLCs, their corporations. We want to know who's behind this. We want a faith behind this. You know, we want all the minutes to be posted on that as well. For whatever they've been talking about, what's been going on and all that. We want all that information. You know, a lot of people are angry. Obviously, people are going to be angry. Why? Because there's lack of information going on in the city right now. You know, you're gonna have angry residents. Right now, I don't even know who to think about the correction of the flyer because we don't even know who wrote it up and who, who permitted it. You know, that's the kind of misinformation that's going on out there. And especially now that we're dealing with cannabis, you guys are threatening very, very, you need to be threatening very lightly with this. This comes from dark money. You guys know this. Once you mess up with this, this is it for our city. You know, you know, um, uh, excuse me, I'm sorry. You know, our residents need more information. I know there's a town hall coming in, but you pretty much knocked it out with the first flyer. People think they don't have a stand a chance, but people are standing up. They're doing these petitions. These need to be clarified by the committee. The committee themselves, it has to be posted right away. I also wanted to address last two weeks, what, there, there were some issues. I wanted to address in regards to the, I would, I don't want to say this, unprofessional behavior by canceling a resident because he was angry about the dispensary. But you also was disrespectful to our city clerk's office. Mayor, you need to apologize.
Sir, please address the council as a body.
Because this is disrespect, you know. First of all, you guys have a free office space there that you guys can call in employees, which they're not your employees. But I'm just saying, employees that do work for a living there, that you have free offices that you can go and-
Sir, you have fifteen seconds.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. So yeah, so this is a great city. We, in this, in this city, we judge people by their race. We don't judge people by their race, their gender, sexuality. We just, we judge people by their content of the character. Shout out to, to M R K. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
We have one more call. Go ahead, Diana.
Um, hi, Daniel.
Yes.
Go ahead, you're on.
Okay, yes, I was just totally against the cannabis retail stores here in Hawthorne. I have kids still going to school and I've seen and experienced some of these areas that have these cannabis stores. And I don't think it's good for the city of Hawthorne for my kids, for their safety and just with crime in general. I, this, this is why I'm voicing my concern about this. And I am totally against, I'm totally against this cannabis retail stores in Hawthorne. That's, that's pretty much what I wanted to say about that.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
That's all the speakers.
That's the end of public comments.
Thank you so much. Oral communication is closed, order.
I can't wait thirty seconds.
We started it.
Okay, I think that's it. Oral communication is closed, order. Right, city council members, colleagues. As has been customary in the past, we've done the city, city committee selections upfront along with Mayor Pro Tem appointments. Is there anybody in opposition to bringing it up? Okay. Seeing that there is no opposition, we're going to proceed with this. For the first matter, I wish to nominate Councilmember David Patterson for the Mayor Pro Tem position.
Back it up.
Okay, are you willing to accept, sir, before we go forward?
Uh, yes, sir.
Yeah?
Absolutely, Mister Mayor.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear. So yeah, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rayce English?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
So I appreciate you, Councilmember Patterson, for taking that role, being my substitute whenever I'm not able to make it to a meeting. And so you're, you know, you're very worthy of this position. And I know I can depend on you and the city can depend on you. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Mister Mayor.
Anything you want to say?
I appreciate, appreciate the confidence entrusted by my fellow council members. Yeah, I look forward to, to taking care of business, you know, if, if needed.
Councilmember, can you go ahead and change your, your Zoom? Your title right there on the Zoom window? I think you can do that. Go ahead.
I'm, I'm gonna see if I can do that. If not, I'm gonna ask staff if you guys can make that change.
Okay. Alright, can you make the necessary changes?
Yes, we'll have Eric Chavez act on that immediately.
Awesome. So as to, we can go one by one? Downs, the first item, the first position is Sentinel U Services. I'm assuming a lot of people want to keep their positions.
Mister Mayor, before we do that, can we confirm and get a vote on Miss Valentine's appointment to the League of Cities of Revenue and Taxation Policy Committee first and then we could vote?
Was that itemized here?
Yes, that's on, that's as part of the recommended motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion for that.
Back it.
Roll call vote for that appointment?
Councilmember Montero?
Aye.
Councilmember Patterson? Oh, never mind. Mayor Pro Tem Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rayce English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
Congratulations, Councilwoman Valentine.
Thank you.
Yes, awesome. Do we have anything else before we go through the list? City Attorney?
No, that was it, Mister Mayor.
Okay. Sentinel, Sentinel U Services, would you guys like to remain in the positions?
I would.
Okay. Count, uh-
Yes.
Okay, no action needs to be taken on that. For the City Selection Committee, I would like to continue in that role. Councilwoman Rayce English?
Yes, sorry.
And if anybody else would like to take on a role, you guys can speak up as well. Okay, no action needed?
Um, I'm sorry, real quick, Mayor.
Go ahead, Miss.
What, what form are you looking at? Because I'm looking at my agenda and I don't see, I don't have a form.
Thirty-two. Look at your tab on thirty-two. Okay, we'll, we'll let her take, get it. It's in your book, thirty-two. Yeah, it wasn't, because I brought it up, so I know you have to pull that out.
Okay, that's fine.
Do you see that? Just wait till-
What number are you on?
Second page, City Selection Committee. I'd like to continue with the-
Got it, yes.
Would you like to continue?
Yes, that's fine, please.
County Sanitation District, number five. I, the delegate must be the mayor, but Council, Councilmember Montero has graciously substituted for me since that's in the day when I'm working, I can't get off, so I'm a working man.
I will continue if you wish.
Uh, thank you so much, sir. Appreciate it. Appreciate it deeply. Independent Cities Association, I'm, I need to be the mayor. Is Councilwoman Rayce English or anybody?
I'll take it, that's fine.
And if anybody wants to take anything, I'm not trying to uproot anybody, but anybody feels strongly about maybe taking on a role? Please speak up because or else we would, you know, nobody gets an opportunity to try stuff. Uh, it, the I C R M A or the Councilwoman Valentine, is that something or anybody else?
Yes, I would like to continue in that role.
Uh, I could be the alternate.
Um, vacant second.
Taking alternate.
Second alternate, okay. Alright. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem? The Mayor Pro Tem Patterson? So let's just go, should we do a roll call vote on that specific, each one, each, each change, City Attorney or right at the end?
No, why don't we go through all the, all the session and then vote at the end?
So, okay, cool. Let me write that down. League of California Cities?
I'd like to stay there.
Councilwoman English, you want to stay?
Just stay, yeah, that's fine.
Okay. The Clean Power Alliance? Montero, English, you guys want to stay there?
I would like to stay there, but Mister Mayor, I want, I want to put a second alternate that would be a staff from the Public Works, could be Agvar or Salina.
Is that required or is that suggestion or what happened?
No, it is because sometimes there is some information that they should bring to the, to the public.
So what is that considered? We have a current alternate?
It's a second alternate.
You could just, you could just-
They can attend the meeting, but they will, they can still be on Zoom, for example. But I'll be the delegate that vote issues, but they can still there just to listen what's been going on. There's a lot of information.
And Councilwoman English, you want to just give that over to the staff instead?
No, no, the singles can still there, but I will have a second alternate.
So let me explain. So Councilmember Montero is the voting member. I'm his alternate when he's not available. And then there's a city staff advisor to both of us from the, from our city department. So it would be Public Works, you could just indicate third person, uh, uh, from the Department of Public Works, so that's fine.
Yeah, it used to be Doc Kraus.
Right.
Remember Doc? Doc Kraus that went to Ramona Beach?
Yep.
Yeah, and since then, we, we had Frank, Frank Fang that, and then he also moved on, so we have not assigned nobody.
Do we, City Attorney, do we need to name a person?
No, that's fine. That's fine, Mister Mayor.
Alright, we'll have that changed. So we have Patterson for I C R M A and a second alternate designated a staff for Clean Power Alliance. The M T A, Metro Board? Would you guys, Rayce English and Patterson, you guys want to stay?
I'll say I'm open to change also, if somebody else is interested.
Councilwoman English?
I'm fine. I, I don't have, yeah.
Alright, has it been a demanding committee or not really? All right, has it been a demanding uh committee or not really?
For the most part, a lot of these are because of COVID, they're not really, you know, as active as they could be.
South Bay Cog?
Excuse me, I, what is the function of the Metro Service Council?
Go ahead.
The, okay, that's that should be striked because they already have their members and it's not us that makes the selection.
What do you mean?
It's the it's the cog, Jackie Baccarat and their office. They make the selection, uh, the nomination for, uh, so so there's an application process and you need to apply to be appointed. But it's not, it's not appointed by us.
You're talking about the metro?
Yeah.
So then we don't need this committee?
Right, you need to scratch that out, it's an error.
Are we absolutely sure?
Yes, because I served for three years, but you guys never appointed me. I had to apply to the um
Oh.
Jackie Baccarat, their council, and then meet with their people for a nomination, so it doesn't come from us.
Mr. City Attorney, are we good with that?
That's that's fine, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I can ask, has anyone attended uh this committee meeting at all in the last two years or year?
Yeah.
I I I applied.
Okay.
They chose Mayor uh Richardson from the city of Manhattan Beach.
Oh.
So it's not us, again, it's not us. You have to go before a five body
Yeah.
uh or three body um elected members from the service council region. And they make the selection, so he was just elected last year, June to sit on that uh seven or is it nine board member seat?
Okay, so that change has been made. Um, South Bay Cog, Valentine Montero, you guys like to stay?
Yes, I'd like to stay in the position.
Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember?
Yes.
South Bay Regional RCC Board of Directors, Montero English, you guys want to stay?
That's fine.
Yes.
And nobody else wants to talk? Okay, uh, okay, you guys will keep it. Scag, Reyes English, Valentine, you guys okay like that or what?
Yes, that's fine with me.
Councilwoman English?
Yeah, that's fine.
The the Southern California Cities Consortium JPA, Valentine English, you guys good?
No, I'd like to uh, I'd like to step down from that.
Okay, is there anybody that would like to step up?
I'll step up.
You'll move up? Anybody who else would like to be the alternate?
Uh, I'll be alternate.
All right, good. Cool. Okay, folks, I'm gonna just, uh, and then the West Basin Water Association?
Yes, I'd like to remain on that uh in that position.
Mayor Pro Tem Patterson?
Uh, I mean, if someone wants to be the alternate, I'll I'll step down if someone's interested, but I'm open.
How many meetings have you had, Councilwoman Valentine? That's really comes down to that.
Oh, West Basin, uh, West Basin meets every month.
Every month?
Yeah.
Is there anybody in a position to be able to? What are the times in the uh times?
Uh, fourth Mondays at twelve thirty.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
I'm sorry, one o'clock.
Anybody else?
Well, if if uh Mayor Pro Tem Patterson is the one, I can be the alternate.
And that's that's in an alternate status, so only only when called on, so you don't have to worry about it. Thank you, sir. Okay, councilmembers, uh, councilmembers, I'm going to make a motion on the changes as follows, based on our uh conversation. For the IC- ICRMA, Mayor Pro Tem Patterson will be taking the second alternate position. Uh, for the Clean Power Alliance, there's a second alternate position being added for appointed city staff. We're striking the MTA Metro South Bay City Service Council. We are uh changing out uh Councilwoman Valentine for the JPA uh with Mayor Pro Tem Patterson. And we're replacing uh Mayor Pro Tem Patterson with Councilmember Montero for the West Basin Water Association.
Uh, one correction, Mr. Mayor, um, the Southern California Cities Consortium JPA was delegate was Councilwoman Andrew.
Yes. I I stand corrected, I am so sorry, um, I my arrows were jacked up right here, so. Uh, Southern California Cities Consortium JPA, Councilwoman uh Reyes English is the first delegate. And Mayor Pro Tem Patterson is the alternate.
Me.
Second? Do we have a second?
Second, second.
Okay, I made the motion, it's been seconded by Councilwoman Montero, roll call vote, please.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Patterson?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Excellent, thank you, councilmembers for stepping up, uh. Make sure you guys give us your reports when you guys go to these meetings and uh I'll do the same. Okay, uh, thank you. Mr. Clerk, your consent calendar, sir?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have four items on my consent calendar. There are items five, six, ten, and eleven for your consideration and approval. Item five, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and or ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item six, treasurer's request approval of the warrants. Item ten, resolution number eight, three, three, five, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, re-ratifying the proclamation of state of emergency by governing New uh Newsome on March fourth, twenty twenty, and re-authorizing remote teleconference meetings of the city council commissions and committees of the city of Hawthorne for the thirty day period beginning February eighth, twenty twenty, through March eighth, twenty twenty-two pursuant to the Roth Brown Act and Assembly Bill number three, six, one. Item eleven, resolution number eight, three, three, six, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, de- dedicating February two thousand and twenty-two as Black History Month for adoption.
Move to approve.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Patterson?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes. That concludes my consent calendar, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, awesome. Uh, we have some bids, I think we have at least, we we just have one bid. Um, Mr. City Clerk, go ahead, item number eight.
Now is the time and place to declare publicly received sealed bids for sewer improvement project two thousand and twenty-two, project number twenty-one dash zero seven. Public Works Department Declaration of Publication filed. There were two bids received, all were accompanied by bidder's bonds. The prices are as follows. Southwest Pipeline and Trenchless Corp., one million, two hundred fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars. Sancton Technologies Inc., one million, three hundred and ninety-one dollars, three hundred and sixty-one.
Okay, um, I make a motion uh to refer these bids to staff for study recommendation?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Patterson?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Thank you. Uh, we have ordinances now, uh, I think we have about a single ordinance, go ahead, Mr. City Clerk.
Okay, um, ordinance number two, 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 nine, second reading, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, the menu in section two point four, six point zero, seven, zero of the Hawthorne Municipal Code adding Juneteenth, Caesar Chavez Day and President's Day as a municipal holiday for adoption.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Patterson?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Mayor, to to the chair real quick.
Oh, I was gonna say something real quick.
Yeah.
Congratulations to city staff, um, just remember, even though these may be days off, just make sure that you keep the memory of what happened on Ju- Juneteenth and with Mr. Caesar Chavez and the presidents that have formed our country, okay? Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. I I too just want to share my sentiments on the importance of uh these holidays and more importantly, it reflects the workforce that we have currently and most importantly, the residents of Hawthorne. So it's good to see that we have uh a consensus and more importantly, um, a celebration of sorts to remember those that are no longer here with us, that were the trailblazers that assisted us in making sure that we had our fair share when it comes to uh positions in elected office and just um that of authority. So um great work on staff and those that made the recommendations to bring them forth before council, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Um, next we have general matters. Uh, we have item number sixteen. Go ahead.
Okay, city attorney independent auditors report, recommended motion, staff recommends that the city council receive, approve, and file the city attorney independent auditors report.
I move?
Actually, I have um a second, actually I have some questions for Sam.
Okay, go ahead, so it's been moved and seconded, but go ahead with your questions, sir?
Uh, yeah, my question is directed to the city attorney, uh, city manager, whichever, uh, you know, most appropriate to answer. Um, uh, this is a um, an audit that I uh had asked for and I want to see if we can get a little bit of a report on like the important findings uh from the from the investigation.
Absolutely, Mayor Pro Tem, we have a consultant online, they have a short presentation, they'll be available for questions after the presentation. So at this time, I'd like to introduce um outside, uh, consultant that assisted us with um our audit. We have Gubert and Lopez, uh, Matt, are you available?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Uh, you have your presentation or do we have that for you?
Yeah, I think Eric.
Okay, Eric, can you tee up the presentation, please? Thank you.
Well, first of all, thank you uh for having me uh present, mayor and members of council. Um, we had begun this engagement um earlier in twenty, well, mid, I guess, mid twenty-one um and and finalized that report um uh in July. Uh, we actually engaged, uh, if you go to the next slide, we were engaged by the city on June tenth and and really what we did here is perform some agreed upon procedures where we talked with staff and found out what their concerns were. We um identified areas that we could protest and report back to as in terms of our findings. Um, the AUP essentially was to gain an understanding of the operations of the city attorney's department, including their staffing, budgeting, um expenditures, and it was actually for a five-year period, I have a typo there. It was a five-year period beginning with fiscal year June thirty sixteen, all the way through June thirty, twenty twenty. Uh, in that process, we worked with staff, uh, did interviews, understood the processes. Um, in that, um, in this engagement, we we looked over hundreds of transactions over that period of time. And really, our test was to uh make sure that the policies that were in place were being adhered to um and making sure that um transactions were properly reported, right approvals, right account groupings, and so on and so forth. So if you go to the next slide, I have a few of the the highlights in terms of our findings from the report um that I'd like to go over with you. Uh, the first one is, uh, what we found is that the city attorney's budget, their department um holds all the budgeted expenditures for outsourced legal, yet there are certain departments that are also using that, utilizing those services. Um, essentially, there could be something in Public Works where they need to do some environmental studies and need some outsourced counsel. Um, those types of transactions, we found, were being budgeted within the city attorney's department, yet he's not really, that department isn't really in charge of that particular activity. And so we've recommended that in instances where departments are utilizing outsourced legal services, that they be responsible for that budget and that approval process um rather than the city attorney. Now, obviously, there could be instances where uh the city attorney does help other uh departments. Um, but in cases where the city attorney's department doesn't have that expertise and it's outsourced, we believe that those are areas where um the department heads themselves should take responsibility for those contracts and that that budget. Um, in that uh particular sense, so if you go to the next slide, I can go to the next, uh. Now, we also found that um the uh city attorney's department had significant reclassification of budget amendments um out of settlement and contract services accounts. Um, essentially, what we found is that these amendments were done at the end of the year to really put accounts in line with what, uh, so that they were not over budget. And essentially, those changes at the end of the year um are are essentially circumventing that budget control process that's in place. So what we have recommended is that when an account does go over budget, that's when you stop the spending, you go to council with an approval of an amendment, if you will, for increasing those or reallocating those costs at that time rather than at the end of the year, just trying to line up budgets, so.
Can I can I expand on that?
Sure.
So you're saying that if um one I guess area or one one contract went over budget, they would just kind of pay for it from what was approved from another budget?
Um, and and this will get to another one of the comments, but if say, for example, we had the the contract services account and say the 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 budgeted amount was a million dollars and then maybe in settlements, it was a million dollars. Well, if we had one point two million in in the contract services account and we had leftover in the settlement, we would just move those around at the end of the year so that both the counts were in line. Uh, rather than, rather than saying, hey, we've gone over budgeted in the contract services account, we have to go to council and say, look, this is why we need to increase this budget. And then say, we can, you know, utilize unused budgets from other areas, but we we think it's the best practice that when you do go over budget, that those amendments be brought to council at that point in time rather than.
So, uh, so the contract services would be overspent and they would just take or money from the settlement account or the budget from the settlement account would just be used to cover that overspend?
And these, and these are.
Has that happened more than once?
Yeah, and these are just examples of two accounts, it it does seem to have been that was the the practice over the period of years that we did our review.
Over the last five years at least.
Through six, for obviously from sixteen to twenty twenty, so that's what we we identified, multiple instances of that each year. Um, uh, for not only the city attorney's department in the general fund, but also the internal service.
Got you.
Uh, if you want to transition to the next slide? Uh, this is also something we find uh most often with a lot of our audit clients is is written policies and procedures. And we found that the city doesn't have a formal written policy and procedure for determining when to assign cases to outsourced legal services. And there's no real policy for how to retain those firms, so you have a lot of firms that have worked with you for a lot of times, but aren't necessarily being evaluated on a regular basis to ensure that their quality of service um is is being um, you know, given to the city. Now, so our recommendation is as such, we recommend that you have these policies and procedures in place that will guide staff as to how uh management, council, and the city attorney uh want to um utilize these services and assign cases to the various firms. And then obviously, having a process in place for reviewing their services over a period of time to ensure that um they're giving the city um the highest quality of service.
So there hasn't been any kind of guidelines in the past?
We did not, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, but there hasn't been any guidelines in the past on this subject, the uh uh whoever made decisions would have the ability to just uh at any point outsource to whomever for whatever reason?
Uh, obviously, the decisions being made, we didn't determine if they were right or wrong. We are merely saying that there's not a a form or policy that you can go to and say, hey, this is our goals, this is our guidelines, this is when we're going to outsource, this is when we're going to retain the cases or the activity in-house. Um, and and clearly, when you are outsourcing to numerous firms, um, you know, making sure that they're providing you the highest quality, they have just the ability to keep doing the work and they're not uh going against competitive bid or being evaluated against other firms, um, that's probably not a best practice. And as an auditor, we have to, we go through the RFP process, three to five years for every client um as you do for most construction projects, so you are going through a competitive bid process and we would assume that this would also make a a be an area where you would want to continue doing something like that. And if you came to the next slide? And this is our last comment in terms of some of the the more significant findings that we felt were important. Uh, and this is a little technical, but it relates to the general ledger of the city's uh department. Um, it has limited amounts of uh accounts for tracking very diverse types of expenses. As we did this work, uh, we found that the city attorney's department is is really managing a bunch of different types of activities. Um, whether it be workers' comp and that has its own situation, you have general liability, we got prosecution, and then we have other departments' activities being co-mingled in here. Um, we are suggesting that the general ledger, which is the listing of accounts, um, be more detailed to allow for uh more precise coding of these expenses so that when you take a look at the financials, we can tell how much we spent on uh general liability versus um, you know, prosecution versus environmental stuff or or any other type of services. Um, we talked to the city attorney about, you know, it's, we don't have an opinion as to what the buckets need to be, but we felt if there were more buckets, you would have better information to see where you're spending the money, would force you to budget at a a a greater level of detail. And I think all of those um lead for um a deeper level of understanding the budget and analysis of spending of the spending, you know, at year end and for years going forward.
Got it.
Okay, so those really are the the big items that we had thought were the most important. Okay, so those really are the, the, the big items that we had thought were the most important to, to, to bring your attention to. Um, obviously, the report that we have published, there's a lot of uh, other items in there. Um, a lot of them have to do with us looking at transactions and finding that uh, the internal controls of the city were properly adhered to and whatnot. Um, so overall, we were, you know, we just felt that these were the more important ones and that we wanted to bring to your attention. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any more questions.
I have a question for the city attorney and city manager. Just curious what, based upon the results of, of this audit. What specific changes um, were you guys thinking of making?
Well, I, I think first of all, um, the more detail for the buckets, I think that would be more helpful. Um, in terms of creating a written policy, uh, first of all, we have an ordinance where the city attorney has a discretion. To utilize various services for outsourcing uh, the contract service works. Um, the big bulk of our contract service currently is, is the prosecution unit, which is uh, mostly. Um, contract services. Um, there are certain areas, I think, um, the auditing firm is not really familiar with details. Of what transpires in city attorney's office. So there are some uh, findings that I didn't feel were appropriate. Such as, as specific remarks about prosecution unit. That is something that um, I think that one of the findings was that the, the uh, the contract service prosecutor. Should specify, um, I guess hourly what work, what case he's been working on. And that's just not possible with the misdemeanor prosecution based on the volume that we deal with. Um, in terms of, these are, you know, I, I didn't examine in detail the past five years of financial statements and how things were done. But I think um, it, what we have right now is a very limited number of outs. Um, outside counsel that we use and they specialize in specific areas. So if, let's say we have um, i- in terms of the contract services for litigation cases. Well, if it goes through such as personal injury or civil rights type of case, it first goes through I C R M A. Um, our pooled insurance and they have panel of attorneys that we select from. And usually, we base it on our history of how well they performed. And you know, based on our uh, dealings with them and based on their level of uh, competence and things of that nature. We, we, we analyze and I discuss this with the assistant city attorney who handles this. And there's, you know, there's some changes constantly being made and modified. Um, but you know, when it comes to I C R M A, there is a whole variety of law firms that we use. And that's based on uh, what these particular law firms specialize in. We, we have law firms that strictly deals with um, lawsuits involving employees, you know, and lost and law firms that deals. There are several law firms that we use when it comes to police lawsuits. Um, so um, it, it's very difficult to have a pre-written policies when it comes to outside counsel.
So I, I know, say, I'm gonna interrupt a little bit. I understand there, that every item may or may not be feasible. I was just curious, was there any particular changes that you do see make sense?
It, it absolutely makes sense where um, we do use, utilize uh, uh, you know, various law firms. Uh, one main law firm for different departments, you know, land use is a big area, public works is another area. The airport is another area. These are areas that um, we do provide a legal service. And sometimes I, I'm a little confused when um, we're doing uh, legal, performing legals. Uh, providing legal, outside legal services for other departments. And you know, I know in the past that things were, it was a little bit uh, very confusing in that. We had H R department um, outsourcing to law firms for personnel investigations and whatnot. And they would have total discretion, but it would come out of the city attorney budget. That's a, that's one example. You know, so I, I think when I, after I was appointed, I stopped that practice and we did not budget for H R. Um, law firms, outside law firms to do personnel investigation. They are required to, you know, have their own purchase order and budget. Um, but um, yeah, I, I think there's a need for clarification and improvement in terms of what. Which part of the outsourced law firm cost should be attributed to city attorneys versus other departments? I, I completely agree with that.
If I can add to that, one thing we're going to look into during our budget hearing is uh, as Mr. Matt said, is looking how to automize different buckets. For, for different use, uh, so that we can track what we're spending. If we need to charge back to another department due to the cost uh, incurred by that investigation or whatever we're doing. We'll be able to charge that back to that department.
And I could work with other departments. Typically, um, I, I think the outside law firm is used quite a bit. And consultants as well, not just law firms for land use issues. And I, I can work with the director of those departments, public works and uh, planning. Um, to uh, work out a purchase order or budget for those outside law firms to assist their departments. In terms of um, the big bulk of outside law firms that we use, uh, that is claimed through I C R M A. Those are specific to police type of cases. I, you know, it, it, I don't think that that's an area that should be attributed to the police department. I think that should remain with the city attorney's office. But I think the main areas that we need some clarification going, moving forward is the uh, consultant costs. And the outside law firm that we use for mainly uh, land use, that's planning and public works. I think that will be helpful.
Council member Pat, uh, Councilman Montero and then Councilwoman uh, Valentine, please?
Ms. Valentine had the hand up before me.
I thought I saw yours.
I saw Valentine first.
Okay, you'll go ahead, Councilwoman Valentine, go ahead.
So I wanted to address this to uh, Mr. Linton. So you said that the city attorney's department in the past. Had significant reclassification of budget amendments uh, each year um, out of settlements and contract service accounts. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, that was an example.
And you, and you wanted to, this practice to change. Well, you weren't saying that this was an improper practice, uh, were you?
Uh, no, this happens frequently. When a account goes over budget, uh, the department head will look at it and say, hey, we have no more room in this budget. Where else in my budget can I use that I haven't spent and then do a reallocation? Um, in many cases, um, those are at least signed off by the city manager and if they're significant, go to council approval. Um, what we noticed is that this, that never happened until June thirty. Those were reported at June thirty. So if the overspending happened, say in March, the spending just kept happening and happening and happening. Um, the best practice and the reason that we have the budgets and the budgetary constraints is that you work within that budget. And if you need to spend more, you go to council to get approval and explain why.
But I, I just wanted clarification that you weren't saying this was an improper practice. You were just saying it wasn't as efficient as it should, as it should.
Um, it's uh, it's not improper in this respect that the budget overall that was previously approved by council did not increase. Um, but the allocation of where council said the money should go had changed. And best practices dictate that, you know, when you make those changes and you make the budget amendments at the end of the year or mid-year. Typically, what happens is you do that mid-year is that those are approved prior to you overspending that budget.
But when you speak of best practices, you're speaking of best practices in terms of making certain that the budget uh, performs efficiently. But you're not saying that the practices are wrong to be, to be, that, that this practice of reclassification was an im- improper practice in any way.
No, it happens all the time. We're just suggesting that the timing of it could be more uh, time, more in line with the actual activity.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Councilmember Montero and then Councilwoman English?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, to Mr. uh, Matt Linton, um, thank you for the, for the, for the report. And I was uh, uh, reading all the five, at least I, you know, five recommendation that I think it's important. Uh, for the sake of transparency, right? Because when you're talking about at the end of the year, people circumvent the approved budget and readjust the budget. Without coming to the city council, uh, that is a problem to me. Can you comment that, please?
Uh, it's similar to the conversation we had. This is a regular practice in most cities where they do budget amendments and adjustments. Um, and the overall budget did not increase, so they did not end, at the end, spend more than one was previously approved by council. So that would be something that would be more of a significant issue. We are, um, and again, in this report, we looked at what happened and we report what we found. Um, we're not necessarily giving a, an opinion per se on, you know, your overall internal control structure. But we are suggesting that this practice um, is not wrong, but it could be done in a more timely fashion. And we are suggesting that if you have significant swings in a particular account, that it would be appropriate probably as a best practice. To report to council, hey, we are switching, we had something happen significant here, so we need to reallocate whatever number of budget. From one account to another account. That would be um, in terms of transparency, the most appropriate way.
Yeah, a- a- and, and you mentioned about that, you would recommend that it, you know, from ten to, ten thousand to twenty thousand. Without city council approve, but after that, they should come to city council because that's, that's the normal?
Yeah, that's what we generally see. Now, obviously, our um, what we recommend doesn't always work for every client. And so we're just giving you a general ballpark. It's important for the, the city council and management to come up with what they feel is appropriate. Based on the level of, level of activity. So there's going to be certain instances where that, that level isn't right. Maybe it needs to be bigger. Um, but at any point of the conversation that we're having, uh, really what we're looking for is to have whatever controls are in place. Whatever your structure is for budgeting, that you adhere to that and whatever mechanism you have for changing the budget, that be utilized. And you know, when you see all of the adjustments at the end of the year, we're just saying that doesn't look, you know, that's not the best practice that, that should be, be performed.
And, and, and the same philosophy would, would apply to the uh, uh, the blank purchase order that we're not approved.
Right, and you know, I think uh, city attorney also mentioned that same situation. So I mean, it's, these are practices that, a- and I quite honestly, we have not looked at the current activity over the last year and a half. We, we're kind of doing a historical look back at what has been happening so that maybe we can identify some things. Some will work, some will not. Um, but give, you know, Mr. Kim the opportunity to at least, you know, adjust his department uh, the way he feels appropriate. But um, so we have no, you know, we didn't look at anything in, in the current activities. Uh, to suggest if that's still happening or not, but it, it was clearly an issue in the past.
And, and if I may interject, I'm sorry, it, it's that um, this line item adjustment, it's not just unique to city attorney's department. All departments, this has been an ongoing practice. And as, as I hear Mr. Linton say, it's pretty common practice in most municipalities. It's just that the last minute adjustment, I guess, that, that's something that is a signi- significant amount. Um, that it should come to the council, but um, you know, this should be done mid-years. There's a mid-year adjustment period where this can be done. Um, but um, you know, it, it's, I, I don't want the council to think that this is only a, a situation with city attorney's office. It's pretty much for all departments.
Okay, and again, we focused our report, just our, but as we only looked at the city attorney's department, we didn't look at any other department. So unfortunately, he's probably getting um, you know.
The other thing that, that I was shocked over here, uh, it was about the city attorney, uh, a retired city attorney. That was paid fifty-five dollars an hour, but then on an annual, on a ten ninety-nine, he made ninety thousand a year. That was almost like a full-time employee.
Yes, I mean, um, Mr. Kim has, you know, an opinion on this as well. I mean, he, this individual is doing a lot of work for the city, um, and, and I think doing good work. We're not taking any opinion. Um, we're merely suggesting if you do have someone that is working that much, um, you know, it would be, maybe they should be an employee. Uh, maybe there's other reasons why he's not. But it's something where, you know, a- and again, goes back to that contract, you know, outsourcing. I mean, at the end of the day, he's got a ninety thousand dollar contract and there's, the, the process for that is different. And uh, we're suggesting that your policies, procedures, internal controls should kind of follow through, uh, regardless of the situation.
So, so uh, uh, Mr. Kim, I don't know if you can speak on this one. Uh, is this ninety thousand dollars that, uh, that the legal fees, it was for the um, prosecution side? Or some other issues?
It's, it's for prosecution. Uh, we, we have a retired D A. He's been with the prosecuting cases since his retirement from the district attorney's office. I think it's now turned into fifteen years or so. And I, I don't want to go into too much. But it is a, you know, that, that was initially offered. Do, does he want to be full-time? But you know, he's semi-retired at times. He likes to take, you know, a month off here and there before the pandemic. But in any case, um, he's uh, he's, he, he does work almost forty hours a week. So you know, this is a court.
Correct.
Currencies where right now, we have three prosecutors. They're all um, uh, by contract services. And they're all there because the courts open five days a week and we need to staff and we have a, a very busy court. So um, we need those three attorneys to be prosecuting cases. And uh, in the past, it was, we had two full-time in criminal prosecution. But uh, for various reasons, it turned into uh, contract services for now. But e- even though the, you know, you may see it as ninety thousand a year. Um, you gotta also understand the city is not paying additional benefits.
Correct.
Cause he's an independent contractor.
Yeah.
So, so you know, we were trying to keep the budget low, but um, there are times that. Um, it's particularly when it comes to criminal prosecution, it's, it, it's actually saves money for the city overall. And there are sometimes a reason for that, um, personal reasons for that. And then there are sometimes a person just entering uh, a new position as a prosecutor. You know, we prefer to, for them to start as an independent contractor than just hire them outright as a full-term employee.
Okay, thank, uh, thank you, Mr. Linton, uh, to, to, to Mr. Kim. Um, just um, look at this uh, audit and report and then tell us uh, which recommended item. That you would recommend to be, to be kind of like rewritten policy or change in a sense. So I, it, I would like to see your opinion, okay?
Are you asking me?
No, not you, Mr. Linton.
Oh.
Uh, Mr. Robert Kim.
Oh, okay.
Basically, to look at your, at least these five recommendations that you put in writing. Uh, and then to give us uh, his intake, you know, input in, in, which, which one of them that makes sense or does not make sense.
And I would prefer to um, to work with the finance department in discussing these issues. Because um, my understanding is that the way we've been keeping the books and the accounting has been following the same traditional method. For years and you know, it, it, I would, like I said earlier, I, you know, I do prefer to have more detail and more buckets. Um, and better, I guess, a um, a, a designation of how much of the. Of the legal services are being uh, actually served for other departments. Uh, these are things that I think I should work, sit down with the finance department and work things out. But you know, they have their set methods and you know, it, it's not something that I don't think that can be worked out over, you know, overnight. But you know, I, I'll definitely.
Take your time. Very busy and you, you, you have skeleton crew. And, but I just want to make sure that uh, people understand that we want to be transparent and we don't want actually people to come back and say, oh. The city attorney is spending a lot of money out, outside consults or, so, so, so it was for your uh, own good per se. Uh, yes, work with the uh, with the finance department, the city manager and, and uh, and see, come up with something that can. Everybody will understand and will be clear, right? So people not thinking that, oh, the city attorney is hiding uh, some matter, some issue or some money. Okay, so I don't want them to be blaming you down the road.
Yes, I, and, and you know, part of the complication comes from the insurance.
Yes.
Accounts that's kind of meshed into the city attorney's department. And that is another, another um, big uh, task in itself.
Thank you, Mr. Linton and Mr. Kim. Thank you. I'm done, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Councilwoman English, you still want to say something?
Yeah, no, I, I, of course. Um, so, Mr. Linton, yeah, uh, thank you so much. It was very thorough. I liked the PowerPoints. It was a cut and clear and I like that. Um, for as long as I, I can remember, um, there's always been a concern about. Uh, how we're contracting and how we're providing legal services. And so uh, it's good to know that I think once and for all, we see the bigger picture here. And what we need to do, to do better and how we go forward from here. So um, there are a little uh, concerning things that obviously we all saw in the presentation. And, and it made us ponder and go, we thought so or, yeah, I thought that was something like that, right? It, it was good, good to, to physically see. It it was good, good to just physically see that. But um at no fault at Mr. Kim, considering he just got here, right? But um I understand that he has more knowledge about the prosecution portion of that where that's what he does. Or did mainly and how they're contracted out to other attorneys that did similar uh work, etcetera. My concern would be more of using the same attorneys in a in a sense over and over and over again. Um I I know there's 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 times um we just feel comfortable with the ones that we've had. And uh these are just ones that we could call on quickly and, you know, could take our cases. Um I'd like to see maybe if there's, you know, a selection of others that maybe they could um bid for. The the cost to retain them and maybe at that point, we could see that. You know, we don't necessarily have to spend as much just because that's what they've cost and that that's what they've cost and charged us for all this time. Uh maybe moving forward, we could be a little bit more selective in vetting out probably um services at a lower cost. And just have a selection of various other um attorneys for service. But um I like I like the audit overall and I hope we could put some. Policy move moving forward so that we could have uh more uh thorough direction on the books. And follow those procedures so that we could be able to then um either amend, add, or do anything else that needs to. Uh be made on on the books with regards to um, you know, ordinances or just solutions. I think oftentimes too, when we've been in council meetings uh with the attorney. Um we've asked for amendments and things in language and words to be striked and to include other words and whatnot. And although those things were probably documented and said, yes, we would change this and change that, I don't necessarily believe those changes were made. So um it would be a lot of work to have to go back to see a lot of video, but. Um yeah, I I I I agree and I like the fact that the audit was paid and I think it was long overdue, but thank you.
And if I can adjust uh in this conversation by saying during the budget hearings that are coming up very soon, that we will address. Uh the recommendations that were given, uh we do believe best practices are the best practices and we tend to move forward with best practices. For all departments.
Alright, thank you, uh I I make a motion to accept the report.
Second.
Already seconded.
Oh.
Yeah, it was already seconded, it just hasn't been voted on.
So it was uh was the motion, did somebody already make the motion before me?
You had already moved, I had already seconded.
Hold on, we we had done that, remember, we had done that and then you you wanted to ask question, I'm so sorry. So I ha- I had made the original motion and it's been seconded by the mayor pro temp, thank you.
Perfect.
Roll call vote, please.
Okay, council member Montero.
Yes.
Council member Reyes English.
Yes.
Council member Valentine.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Patterson.
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas.
Um yes.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Yeah, so I concur with my councilor colleagues who have said, you know, what they have said and this is good, good insightful, uh good path forward and. We can have a different approach, save some money, it doesn't have to be that expensive sometimes, we don't have to go to the same people all the time. Item number seventeen, Mr. City Clerk.
Yep, uh proposal to prepare an economic development strategy for the city of Hawthorne, recommend in motion. Staff recommends that the city council receive and file.
Make a motion.
Tag.
Tag it.
Uh it's been made, uh I've made the motion, councilor Montero made the second, roll call vote, please.
Council member Montero.
Aye.
Council member Reyes English.
Yes.
Council member Valentine.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Patterson.
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas.
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Item eighteen, go ahead, uh Mr. City Manager and Mr. City Clerk. Can you, can you read that, please?
Yeah, update on city-owned rental properties, need for maintenance and capital improvements.
You have anything to let us know, uh Mr. City Manager?
Yes, yes, good evening, um mayor, mayor pro temp city council. Uh we have Kimberly Mack, our housing director, that's been working diligently to research. Uh a method and strategy to attend to the needs of our city-owned properties. Uh and at this time, I'm gonna turn over the presentation to Kimberly Mack as she. Uh introduce the outside consultants as assessing the properties that we have in hand and how to best um rehab those units. Thank you, Kimberly.
Hi, Kimberly.
Good evening, mayor, um congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem Patterson and other council members. It's a pleasure to be before you tonight, I'm the housing director and it's a joy to come before you to give you an update on the the city properties. Um as you know, the community redevelopment agency purchased these city properties. Some as old as thirty years ago and the newest ones as old as uh about twelve years ago. Um nevertheless, they have not been given um much love and by way of taking care of them. And now they've come to a critical turn where we really have to take action on them, so assessing them and determining what needs to happen. To make sure they became or stay a livable space, a healthy, safe environment is what has been important. So I'm reporting today to let you know that we are meeting, uh the city manager, the city attorney. Um and myself along with Mr. Darren Embry, the vice president of community development at Farring. And Mr. John Fisher, who's the managing director of Standard Communities. Uh to really assess these properties, we walked out and did a visit on each property. We looked at the vacant units there, we took a look at the exterior and interiors. And we came up with a physical needs assessment um for these properties. We're also in the process of creating a strategic plan to figure out the best course of action on how to move forward with these properties. Managing them alone is a full-time job and uh there's a lot of changes that need to take place for these buildings to remain successful. Um as such as, you know, perhaps getting a property manager to come in and take over managing these companies. Making sure that maintenance is done properly and timely so that we don't have to always be putting out fires, but taking preventative measures instead. And most importantly, figuring out a financial plan for them so that we have some reserves put in place. So that when units become vacant, they can be turned quickly. And when the need arises for things to be repaired or replaced, that also can be done quickly. And setting up a plan for when that can happen. Um right now, there is a need to address those vacant units and there also is a need to address units that are currently occupied. So we're considering all these factors during our meetings, they're very um well thought out, everyone is giving some great um advice. And we're getting some really good information from other consultants who are assisting us. And so um I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Darren Embry and Mr. John Fisher. To share the information that we have been meeting about, thank you.
Go ahead, sir. You're muted.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Kimberly, great recap, um Mr. Mayor and and council, um hi again. Uh great to see you all, um Kimberly's really given you a great summary of where we are right now. You know, John and I walked the the properties, um looked at some vacant units, got a great assessment of. The current conditions, heard from Kimberly and and um city manager Norris about, you know, kind of. What the challenges that city's facing look like. Um we think that it's a great idea to put an RFP together. And at least consider, you know, bringing a third-party management team in and to help as we not only. Upgrade and improve, you know, these properties, but consider, you know, some rent increases that are in line with HCD. Limits, of course, and and we're we're, you know, that that's a big recommendation that we're gonna be making, but. We're still putting our details together for you for a full, you know, um wrapped recommendations. And I think within the next, you know, month or so, we should be able to be back before you with some more specifics on. You know, this RFP, maybe some candidates that will be um, you know, putting before you. Um digging more into, you know, any deficit issues that the city's experiencing and how we think. Um you know, rent increases and the maintenance can best serve um the folks that are living there now and, you know, future residents as well. So open to questions if you if you if you have any.
Are there any questions or are we good, city council members?
I've I wanted to.
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, um thank you, Mr. Embry, so my question would be, um so as you look at the the um. As you look at what's facing the city as far as the need for maintenance on an ongoing basis through the years. Um there doesn't seem to be any incoming money that's going to be available to assist us, am I correct?
Well, that's more of a city question, but I I my understanding is that there's some ARPA funds that have been identified. Um one of the things that we're looking at and and maybe uh Mr. City Attorney Kim can can help give us some color on. Whether the set aside money can be used for perhaps only administration, perhaps it could contribute to. We've identified, I mean, I'll just tell you, I think it's in your in your staff report packet, about a million dollars of funds. That are that we've identified, now some of that is, you know, preventative and and forward-looking, not needed right at this moment. But we're trying to put together a long-term plan for you. Um again, half a million dollars maybe is the ARPA funds, um so we wanna figure out how to bridge that gap. Between the half million and and one million dollars and understand better from the city, this is what we're still working through. Um you know, what our options are on the city's side and then, you know, what the city might, you know, countenance as far as rent increases.
So I guess the reason I'm asking this question is because has anyone looked at or is that, is it even a possibility that we could sell these properties?
I don't even wanna sell them.
This is a um, this is a low mod, it's a successor agency property, it's not really city-owned property.
So it's not, so it's not city-owned?
No, it's it's owned by, it's actually, city has a successor agency, but it's actually um a state agency. So we run the successor agency and we run the, we manage the property, but we can't just sell it. I mean, they're low-income properties are part of the uh many grants that we get and we get. We do have some money as a set aside that Mr. Embry mentioned, but uh those money cannot be really used for this purpose. It's it's limited to a administrative charges that we can spend, so. Um it's not something that would be just sold, it's a low-income housing assistance property run through HCD. That uh that regulates all this.
So we need to identify a funding source that will be able to keep this going throughout the years. Because even if we get ARPA funds now, they're they'll be gone very soon, I mean, it won't be something that'll be permanent. And we don't have a funding source, which means that it's always going to be a problem. Um I I I absolutely agree with the idea that we should have a si- a manager, a managing consultant that would manage these properties. But in the future, we need to have a funding source, or we need to identify a funding source or seek a funding source. So that we won't always be in this position, because we're always going to be in the position of not having. Um enough money to 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 do all of the maintenance that that needs to be done. And we'll always be in the position of not having sufficient staff to be able to manage this, so. I don't know, I think I think we need to be very creative in seeking a funding source or funding sources in order to keep this going.
Ms. Mack, can you address um the funding source and what we have internally uh tabled as an idea moving forward?
Uh well, right now, all we have is the the ARPA funds. Um and we definitely need to do rent increases. Uh if you remember, I previously came to the city council requesting the rent increases because they were so low. Uh it really affects greatly the ability for these properties to be self-sufficient or self-sustaining financially. Um we're charging two hundred dollars, two hundred and five dollars rent and everybody wants new carpet and new stoves, right? And utilities have to be paid and things of this nature, and so rent increases are a very big point and factor in making sure that. This is uh possible, uh having reserves in place, we currently have reserves, but those reserves are becoming depleted. And so, yes, funding is very important, but I do believe uh with other companies and other businesses that have low-income affordable housing. It's because they're charging the correct amount of rents and they're properly managing money, putting it in the proper bucket so that the reserves are there. But because our rents are so low, uh it's almost impossible for us to do so, so adopting or adapting a plan. Um to raise those rents is what's gonna be important, right now, what I'm currently doing is as the units become vacant, I'm charging the correct amount of rent. Uh but because our rents are so low, nobody wants to move, right, they're very comfortable. And so that becomes another problem, but in the meantime, we do need to very quickly uh strategize a plan for how we wanna move forward. With increasing those rents and it's gonna be, it would be past twenty forty-seven in order to bring them to the current HCD rent limits, you know. Um for some of the units and some of the units, it would be uh sooner, so I mean, it's. It'll be a process, but we definitely have to start somewhere, we can't keep going year to year without any rent increases at all.
And Darren, if you wanna mention on the RFP, uh our thoughts regarding uh asking for whatever management companies apply. That they give us a strategic plan the next five years, how we can meet Ms. Valentine's request.
No, absolutely, and and kind of to that same point, you know, what we're thinking of bringing forward at, that, you know, the next time we come to you with this. With this item, kind of bite-sized pieces, you know, what's our first step to kind of just get some of the vacant units, you know, turned and and upgraded sufficiently. To get the right tenants in there at the right rent levels. And then next would be a larger rent request, rent increase request. And then, you know, by then, hopefully, we'll have a management company identified or at least some to, for you to interview. And then, I I totally agree with you, uh Mr. Norris, that we should lean on them and their expertise to help us. With a strategic plan and get something that council is is comfortable with.
Um do we, so we got, okay, uh council Montero or Reyes English, which one?
It's Montero, yep.
Councilwoman Montero then, and then a councilwoman English, go ahead.
Uh thank you, Mr. Ma- um good evening, Mr. Embry and Kimberly and John. I wanna say thank you, Mr. Embry, for taking this task, because this is one of the things that I brought up during our conversation. Um with the Millennium Project. Um I agree with all your recommendations and thank you for the report, it was very thorough, I'd like to see. Um I understand that, yes, we definitely need a managed company that could. Potentially, you know, manage these properties, but al- also, you know, that is going also, you know, take a little chunk. Some percentage of the revenues for for their uh management uh time. Um ARPA fund is good, but like uh uh Ms. Valentine mentioned, that it's not, it's it's gonna be up to, you know, twenty twenty-four. And then we have to figure it out, uh how can we bring money? Have you guys thought about potentially for us to get a loan?
Hmm, what do you think, John?
We, I did think about that and nice to see all of you this evening, but um really. The 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 way, the funding source that you're looking for is to, within the guidelines that are already prescribed by the regulatory rings, is to increase the rents. Um having having a loan, although even with interest rates pretty low, having a loan would just create another future liability to pay back. So I I don't think that's a wise course.
Yeah, I was thinking about, you know, if we would get a loan with with, because the low interest right now and and to fix the places. And then have a plan to increase the rent where they should be, you know, from twenty-three to twenty-four. To begin that increasing process, because I understand some of them is gonna be a a very big increase. Because they have not been increased for many, many years, uh so to have a plan. To increase the rent by incremental, right, like say, you know, two years. Uh they will come up to where they should be. And so that will give us a little bit more cushion if we would have the property upgraded with with the loan. And renovate them and then it would be justified for us to increase those rents, right? Um and then, even I'm thinking about maybe the banks or even maybe from, I don't know, from our own. We develop money, can we give a loan to ourselves, Mr. Kim?
Uh no, I I this is, this is, it's a very complex and regulated area. Uh headed by HCD, we really have to be very cautious about uh the way we spend or even. We can't freely give out a loan as a successor agency from the twenty percent set aside fund.
Uh huh.
Um that money uh for twenty, the 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 money for successor agency must be used for new development of. New development of low-income housing, so um that's why we're very restricted on that and there are. You know, strict penalties associated with this, I understand that the HCD is now monitoring all the cities. And to make sure that the funding is being spent correctly. Um and that, you know, there is enough low-income development. And that, you know, there is enough low income development, you know, you could actually end up losing money if there isn't sufficient low income and extra low income development of housing. So we can't freely just manage this money from, that's that's with the low mod fund. We have to follow very complicated guidelines from HCD and the state. So, um, but I I'll go ahead and and ask that question to our consultants that we have on on these successor agency low mod fund. But I I can pretty much tell you that it's probably, the answer will probably be no.
Yeah, yeah, it is complicated, yeah. And you see, like, I I I just got the text message saying don't increase rent to to the elderly and the disabled, see? So it's like, um, it is complicated. So I would love to see, if possible, uh, Mr. Embry and Jo- and John, to look into a loan, right? Because like I said, uh, if if the interest rate is very low, maybe that loan is not going to be a tremendous impact on on the on the general revenues that is going to come from those apartment buildings. If, in fact, that we renovate them from now until twenty twenty four and then if if the rents increase to the level, so then we'll have money to go for the managed company, to pay the loan and some to reserve, because like we commit ourselves to say every month some, uh, maybe ten or twenty percent must go to reserve, right? And then say, or maybe thirty percent is going to pay for the loan and then the rest, whatever, for daily maintenance. So can you guys look into that possibility?
I'll be happy to look into that, but as I, I think the city attorney addressed, that would be very challenging with the existing regulatory agreements to get financing. It'll be very challenging with the rents already so low. Lenders aren't interested in loaning on assets that aren't producing much cash flow.
But they will have a guarantee, a seat of Hawthorne as a collateral.
Okay, I'll see what I can find out.
Right? So 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 just think about out of the box. Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you, gentlemen, and Kimberly, go ahead, Mr..
I I apologize.
Go ahead, sir.
I was just gonna gonna say that, you know, let, step number one seems to me would be freeing up that ARPA money and putting it to work. You have, I don't know how many, Kimberly, six, five or six vacancies right now?
Right, six.
Yeah, we should, I mean, that, and because that, once you fill those units, you'll be, they'll be paying full, you know, full rent, you know, that's allowed. And I personally know of, you know, people, you know, folks that qualify for units like this that are struggling, putting themselves on on lists, whether it's anywhere from West Hollywood to the city of Carson, you know, Southgate and other places. So I'm surprised that the vacant, that I I would target the vacancies as our first, you know, place to to focus on. And ARPA money and and putting it to work in the units.
Yeah, and and sometimes, you know, Kimberly, you know, she she knows that I know a lot of things about these low income housing. And then sometimes it depends on the incomes, right? Because you cannot just say, oh, I'm going to rent to somebody that's making a hundred fifty thousand. Nope, you cannot do that. So we have, we have a guidelines, how much they can make a year to be able to qualify to rent that apartment. And that is where our hands are tied also.
Right?
All right?
Right.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Okay, guys, Councilwoman Reyes English and then Mayor Protem.
Thank you. So Kimberly, real quick, uh, we had the last discussion, last city council meeting, remind me, Vaughn, wasn't it a hundred fifty or two hundred thousand of monies available? Is it Har- Harpo?
A half a million, five hundred K that we set aside.
But I thought, I thought we had given some of that to, uh, the veteran housing.
You referring to the excess funds?
Yes.
Yeah, so those funds cannot be used for this project. That's that's the same funds that City Attorney Kim was speaking of.
Okay, so what what monies do we, what what money can we use?
So pretty much we're we're, um, the excess surplus funds are to be used for new low income and it should be ex- uh, extra low income development, which the Encore project is. In terms of the amount of money that can be used, it's limited to administrative purposes. Um, and but those money are very strictly regulated by HCD. But so right now, for this purpose, for rehabilitation, I I think we just basically have the ARPA money that we have to, um, think about in terms of of investing into rehabilitating these properties.
Okay, so what's the amount of money that we have to use for these properties?
The ARPA funds were approved at five hundred thousand.
So we have five hundred thousand that we could use on these properties.
Correct.
Correct? Okay. I I I'm not necessarily for an RFP to go out for management, okay? Just because it's an ongoing payment that we have to give to the that agency. And I'm not necessarily feeling outsiders being given access first to available property that we have, right, as for rental units. I want to be able to take care of our home and we need to be able to house those that are looking for housing that are in need, whether it's section eight vouchers or those that have emergency vouchers to get them off the street or homeless, right? And I'm not necessarily feeling the increases, however, we talked about increases, Kimberly, back last year when you brought it to our attention, saying we needed to increase. And 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 we did, and we did agree. However, how much does is that increase, right? Because again, folks, like you said, are comfortable, they're used to paying the amount that they have because they have limited resources of income that is coming in. I've talked to a number of them that have called me that are being, um, given eviction notices and they've lived in their places for thirty years. And the issue still remains, um, there 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 are owners that are getting folks evicted, increasing those rents and we're concerned on where are these folks to go, right? They're giving, they're giving just a minimum of maybe two to three thousand dollars and thirty day, sixty day notices to get out. Which is very, very heartbreaking, because at the end of the day, we know they're going to become homeless. So there has to be a balance somewhere and we need to be able to look out for those that can't do. So having said that, I I I would be more inclined to finding, uh, through an RFP, not necessarily a management company, but contractors that can give us a dollar amount on what it would take to rehab these these units, but immediate need, whether we're talking about the plumbing, the roofs, things that are immediate and things that have been overdue, including appliances. You mentioned carpets, I believe that too. However, I I I I have a a a sense of friend, uh, concerns on those that are currently there, uh, being displaced. And that's, and that's not what we're what we're trying to do here. So we don't have protections for our tenants. We don't have relocation assistance monies that we could offer our tenants like Los Angeles does, right? They have a ten reason for eviction and if you fall on the ten reason for eviction, you're given a relocation assistance. And then again, you're based off of what your, um, family makeup is, whether you're just disabled, senior. You have those kinds of concerns that obviously would give you more relocation assistance. So I I I really want to make sure that we're treading lightly lightly here with regards to RFPs. And if anybody's going to put out an RFP, it's going to be you, Kimberly. I want you to put that RFP and I want you to be able to, um, be very descriptive. You know, request for qualifications, request for RFP, but be very, very specific as to what it is that we're looking for in the RFP. But I also want to make sure that we use some of the information that was given to us previously and Vaughn has that information because there was another individual that provided us a walkthrough and provided us a dollar amount and exactly how how these units, uh, need to be improved and what those improvements look like. So if you could please do that, I'd appreciate it. But keep in mind again, um, you have six units open. Why? I don't know. Are those, are 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 is it because we can't fill them? I mean, I'm, I get calls, I got a call today, person has a section eight voucher, looking for Hawthorne, somewhere to move.
But one of the reasons why we haven't filled them is because the money to flip the units, right? We only budgeted so much for maintenance requests. If I spend half of my maintenance budget on flipping one unit, then when needs arise, it's not there for the tenants that are currently occupying the units. So that's something that's been ongoing as well. Uh, but you make some really great points and I'll definitely follow up with the city manager with additional information that he has for us to get these issues resolved.
Yeah, I would appreciate that and thank you for for all the information you've provided us last year, telling us that we needed to increase these rents. And there were some concerns there and there's still concerns, because, uh, all across Hawthorne, rents have increased triple and some. And it 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 saddens me because there are folks still still struggling. So thank you for that. Thank you.
Okay, folks, let's try to finalize this item. It's been a little bit longer than the other ones. So, uh, we do have another comment from Mayor Protem Patterson.
Uh, thank you. A couple of things. Uh, Kim- Kimberly, how much were you proposing to raise the rents previously? Because I know that, you know, the rents range from two hundred dollars a month to five hundred dollars per month. Is that, was that accurate?
Uh, they vary slightly higher. We didn't come up with a specific amount because what I did was provided a five year plan and an eight year plan. And both of those plans, because the rents were so low, didn't bring them to the HCD, uh, rent limits or bring us to where we needed to be. Some of the rent increases went from forty four percent to a hundred and sixty three percent. Some were very close because they were section eight residents to twelve percent. The range was so varied that we didn't come up with a specific amount that we wanted to increase the rents to. And so, uh, Councilmember Valentine asked us to go back and figure out a better plan for that. But it's gonna have to be significant. I mean, this is a business property. We're here to, it's it's supposed to be self sufficient as a income property. But it's not making any income and we got to figure out that balance, like, uh, Councilmember Reyes English said, to figure out how to work out the financial difficulties and maintain it so that the residents can live there in a low, you know, affordable rate.
I I think it makes sense for us to get a property manager. Um, it sounds like it makes sense for us to find other funding sources like Councilwoman Valentine said. Um, the easiest way to do that is, of course, rent those vacant units and and I think it's a good idea to come with, to come with a a concrete recommendation on how the rents could be increased, uh, for the council to consider. Uh, I know nobody wants to increase rents. And I'm, I mean, me as much as everybody else saddened when we had so many residents coming to the to city hall a couple of years ago when rents were going up by fifty percent plus. But I think, um, I think it's possible to, you know, raise rents from two hundred dollars, four hundred dollars. I think that that might be, you know, not not ridiculous. So I I if you can come back with, uh, some type of concrete proposal for the entire council to to consider. Uh, additionally, I I think that, uh, yeah, we should go ahead and, uh, it sounds like we already allocated half a million dollars from ARPA to to repair the units. Uh, I think we should go ahead and take a half a million dollars from next tranche. We get another fifteen million dollars next year, or this year, actually, in July, take a half a million dollars from that and, uh, bring everything to code, bring everything to, uh, the, you know, the right condition so we can go ahead and rent out the vacant units, obviously, and and warrant any kind of increase that the council might decide. But those are my thoughts.
Councilmember Montero, you have a?
Thank you, Mr. May. Actually, David just brought it up. The point that I was going to make is we could make a sacrifice and say, you know, let's use some more money from the Harper Fund because since we moved that money from from that to the general fund and we can have discretion to see how much we want to spend in particular item. So we could say instead of, uh, half a million dollar, we can say, okay, we're going to spend up to one point five million dollar to, uh, upgrade this unit. But I like the idea that Ms. English brought up to have an RFP for a request for proposal, how much is going to cost us to renovate all these units? And if that, maybe there is something that we could say, okay, the Harper Fund money, we're going to spend up to five million dollars to put these buildings up to grade. Because we can do that if we decide to, correct, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, um, there was a, if you recall, when we had that meeting about the ARPA funds, uh, we left discretion by putting more into the general fund, uh, so that the city would have more discretion. And, you know, this is a low income housing, uh, you know, the rehabilitation is absolutely necessary. Um, and the ARPA funds are there for that purpose. So, uh, Councilman Patterson had a great suggestion was, which is, it's already earmarked for five hundred thousand. And then the next round of ARPA funds, maybe the council can vote to approve additional amount.
Yeah, I I I think, I think maybe we should, we should start thinking on that, on that line of thought, that the next, the next time we talk about Harper Fund is to say, okay, we're going to put more money into the rehabilitation of these units because they're very important for our city when it comes for the low income housing, because we do not have enough low income housing in Silver Hawthorne. So, um, that's maybe that is one of our priorities would be put more money into rehabilitate these units. So, uh, you would have my vote for that.
Right. So, uh, I make a motion?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Thank you, gentlemen, and John, and Kimberly.
So I have to read the recommended motion first.
Yeah.
Yeah. The staff advises that the council receive and file the report.
Go ahead.
All right. Councilmember Montero?
Aye.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Aye.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Patterson?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Yeah. I know different quantities are being thrown out as to how much we need. But as, we just need to find out how much it costs to rehabilitate. And that's, that'll answer everything.
Let's find out and then we'll put the money there.
Yeah. Uh, next we have the city attorney's consent calendar.
City manager. City manager.
No, well, we're, yeah, I skipped yours, city manager's consent calendar.
Yes. Good evening. Uh, I have items twenty through twenty four for approval. Item twenty, construction of speed pumps, one forty seventh street between Yukon Avenue and Cerise Avenue. Item twenty one, Hawthorne Municipal Airport, Super Bowl twenty twenty two. Item twenty two, payment of water, excuse me, State Water Resource Control Board, annual MS four permit fees. Item twenty three, progress payment number eight and number nine in the amount of seven hundred, seven, seven oh six, six four five point oh three to Solicitor Contractors Corporation, DBA, Chonery of Downey, California for project number twenty dash one two, Curry Avenue, project improvement project phase two. Item twenty four, uh, third amendment to the consulting agreement for implementation of a business, green business certificate program, third amendment between the city of Hawthorne, a California municipal corporation, city and the South Bay City Council of Governments, SBCCOG. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my consent calendar. May I have a motion to approve items twenty through twenty four?
I'd like to pull item twenty.
I'd like to pull twenty four.
Item twenty, twenty four, go ahead. I make a motion on all all other items?
Second.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
It was seconded by, um, Councilmember Valentine. Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Patterson?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Item twenty first, go ahead, discussion.
Uh, I actually like to recuse myself from this item, uh, other there's no conflict. I do not want to give appearance of conflict since I live close to this location.
Oh, that's no problem. So does he, do you, does he have to step off? Do we have to mute him or what, Mr. City Attorney?
Um, there is, uh, Mr. Chavez has a, uh, a separate room for Mr., uh, uh, Councilman, Mayor Protem Patterson to be in.
Okay.
He is gone.
Just double check that and and he was notified ahead of time to be able to do it, right? Okay, he's gone. I just double checked. I make a motion?
Second.
Uh, it's been, I'll give that to Councilmember Montero. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Okay, let's bring him back, please.
He actually left the meeting. He didn't give me time to move him into the room, so someone has to let him know to, um, sign into Zoom.
Uh, uh, here's he, uh, here's next up.
I'll, I'll text him. I'll go ahead.
I'll text him. I'll go ahead and contact him right now.
Go ahead and start, can we start the discussion on twenty-four?
Yes. Oh, um so yes, so this is my fav, one of my favorite.
Well, is, can we wait until Councilman, uh Mayor Pro Tem Patterson is back in because I want him to be part of the discussion before he votes?
He's actually signing on right now. He's back.
Hello.
Come back. Alright, discussion, please.
Yes, so the green business certification program, and this is one of my favorite COG initiatives because. Council of Government employees and council members in all the cities that belong to the COG. Go out to the businesses and actually describe what they need to do to become certified as a green business. So they have to show that they have adopted green energy practices. The businesses are grateful for the personal contact. Having that certificate and being able to advertise to their customers that they've been certified by the city as a green business. Is good advertising for them and it helps helps improve the city's image to the business community. That we care about their being able to save money. So I am just delighted that they have the, they have received the funding. So that they can continue this program. So I heartily um I move to uh to approve. That uh that the um that the Third Amendment be um be approved.
Second, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember member Reyes English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Patterson?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
City attorneys can consent calendar?
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um we have two items for your approval. Uh the first is a to approve an agreement with Legal Network Incorporated. For temporary, part-time legal assistance services for the city attorney's office. And to approve a purchase blanket purchase order in the amount of thirteen thousand six hundred fifty dollars. Uh second is a settlement of, request for approval of settlement of a lawsuit brought by Irma Albright. Uh we're recommending approval of the settlement of the lawsuit for the amount of one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars.
I move. Uh to uh second goes to Councilwoman uh Valentine, please. Uh roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Patterson?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Uh yes.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Let's see, we have four items and then we're going to have a closed session. So let's move through these four items, please. Mayor Pro, uh well, Councilwoman Valentine, you have item twenty-nine, go ahead. Content requirements for agenda bills, staff reports, go ahead.
Okay, so for the sake of transparency, I am interested in the public and all the council members. Being aware of what has newly transpired in the working committee meetings. Especially those that will result in requesting council approval. Therefore, I am recommending that specialized agreements such as those concerning cannabis. Be placed on the agenda as a resolution and not on the consent calendar.
Have you had the ability of talking this over with our city attorney?
Yes.
Uh Mr. City Attorney, what can can you tell us your feedback or would you like to add more to this, Councilwoman Valentine?
Um no, that's fine. Um if there is any item coming out of the working committee, um we can put it as a resolution rather than a consent calendar. Uh we, I I think uh I had a discussion with Councilmember Valentine. It was regarding the consultant agreement that was um entered into two meetings ago. And you know, we we just put it under city manager consent calendar like other consult consultant calendar. Uh consultant agreements. So it was pulled and we had a a rather lengthy discussion about it. But in in the future, if I don't expect any contracts to come out of the additional contracts. Come out of the working committee, but should the situation arise, we could definitely put it as a resolution rather than a consent calendar.
It would allow for these items to be highlighted a little bit more, right?
Yes.
Was that, I mean, I think there's, go ahead, Mayor Pro Tem.
I just wanna make sure I'm clear. The request is that if any contracts come out as a result of the working committee. Those contracts show up as a resolution instead of a consent item.
Correct.
Got it. And what's the difference between it being a resolution versus a consent item?
Well, if it's a a consent item should be a routine matter. Anything regarding the cannabis agreements. Uh the cannabis committee and the working committee, the cannabis agreements, these are not routine matters. This is the first time the city has ever entered into um a cana, we've never had any cannabis agreements before. We've never had a working committee on cannabis. It is a brand-new area. And the public needs to be aware and it needs to be highlighted that this is some, this is something that we are. That we have been working on and that we are bringing before the council so that it flags it to the public's attention. So I I it's not a routine matter as consent items generally are.
That makes sense. You're saying as a resolution, it's is highlighted to a greater degree?
Correct.
Yeah, as opposed to just a list of city manager consent ca- items, right?
Correct.
And then we're talking about just uh specifically, we're talking about contracts or agreements that might come as a result. Of any of the working committees regarding cannabis.
Correct. Anything that's going to, that that um. Is going to be put before the council to 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 for approval.
Okay, alright. Councilmember Montero, go ahead.
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, um I concur to bring, you know, anything that come from ad hoc committee. Regarding if it's cannabises or economic develop should come to a vote for the full council anyway. Uh because like, for example, economic developers, we're gonna be talking about maybe changing zoning laws. Changing parking laws for commercials and and a park and and a com- and commercial area. So uh all these issues, to be transparent, we should bring it to the city council. So and and I don't anticipate, for example, uh the ad hoc committee for the cannabises to do any contract. That is not approved by the city council because, you know, I don't think there is uh no more contract to be done. Uh at that uh that particularly ad hoc committee. And the same thing for the economic development is that is if we're going to hire a consultant that is more than twenty-five thousand dollar. Then we have to bring it to approve of other full council. So uh transparency, transparency, we're not hiding anything. So uh uh I'll I'll concur that everything that comes from ad hoc committee. Should come for a city council voting, regardless if it's cannabises, economic developer, or anything else.
Okay, um I I just like to say, I'll I'll go to you, Councilwoman um uh Angie Reyes English. But yeah, just by placing it in the city, when you have a city manager's consent calendar, there's just a long list of items. And residents, the last thing we wanna be accused is that we're hiding it in the middle of all these just sim- consent calendar items. So by having it as a standalone id- standalone item that we go over at a single, you know, at a time. It just highlights it more. So I I agree. Councilwoman Reyes English?
Uh yes, thank you. Um so. There's a couple of things that um I wanted to address, but I'll I'll probably do in my closing remarks. I could get a better idea. But um the agenda goes out. Uh if I'm correct, city clerk, isn't it seventy-two hours before a regular city council meeting? So it gives you, it gives you from Thursday or Friday, like literally uh Thursday. I said we'll say Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, five days. To uh view an agenda. And trust me, if we've got callers calling in because they wanna provide a remark. They're aware of the agenda, they're aware of what's being presented before the council for uh discussion, recommendation and votes. Um so we're doing the work of the people, which is basically those. And we've been very redundant about this over and over and over again, that it was a proposition that was placed on a ballot by other. Administration that went on a ballot and it passed. And so the council then went ahead and implemented a cannabis program. And it it gets um redundant and for folks to basically say that they weren't aware. Um I do believe they might have not been aware. However, it's not something that was done underhand or, you know, hidden behind closed doors. We're very transparent. We're in public uh Zoom here tonight. And folks have been following us for a while. Uh because there is public comment coming in with regards to how we're working on the cannabis program and what implement implementations we've taken. To uh to uh move that forward. The cannabis um working committee meeting that we host are set up just like council meetings. Where the agendas are sent out seventy-two hours in advance. It gives the the discussion of topics that we're gonna be discussing. It's a five board member that makes the vote recommendations to the council. And so those those things are occurring and are happening. And again, it takes a a majority to move forward. So everything that we have been doing has been a majority moving forward. Um to. With regards to, say, for instance. Areas in which uh. Folks have not been aware, I'm I'm very skeptical uh with regards to Inglewood Avenue. We've had that discussion before. On one side is county and the other side is um city. And we've had discussions about that many a times. So I just wanna make sure that um fo- folks understand the city of Hawthorne and the county. And I also wanna understand the folks mov- moving forward that are uh providing public comment. They're aware of all the the works that we've been doing uh to get this far. Um I do wanna ask the city attorney, uh if you could look into this with regards to petitions. Um that are being gathered for signatures. Um and I've done a lot of petitions in my time in L.A. Um aren't they normally uh homeowners, first, last name, addresses? Because none of these petitions have addresses. And uh and a phone number. They have emails, but the reason I say this is because this. Uh if you truly are a resident of the city of Hawthorne and you truly have a concern. You should be able to list exactly who you are, your address and where you reside. And uh take that up as a resident uh living in Hawthorne. Um and I do know a lot of our callers who are calling in are not from Hawthorne. They're county in Los Angeles, but it's neither here or there. It just needs to be addressed because I just wanna make sure that folks that are watching and seeing um. We've been doing this by the books. We've got attorneys, we've got um outside council, we've got a lot of. Uh things that we're working on that we don't want to be uh like others that have fallen into um, you know. Legal uh legal issues. So we're not trying to do that. We're trying to stay out of that. And so we're very thorough when it comes to the cannabis program. But uh if you could get that information back to me, uh Mr. Kim, I'd appreciate that. And then if you could also uh receive the petitions and file those for us as we. We do with the city clerk's office whenever getting public comment either by email uh or by calls. So that we could make sure to record that uh that that information uh when it comes in. But um that that that's that in a nutshell. Um and 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 with regards to however we need to do it on the agenda. That's what we need to do. And if there's a consensus of doing it uh how Councilmember Valentine mentioned, and then that's what we're gonna do. Uh I don't, I don't want to um, you know, think for a minute that we're not being transparent, cuz that's not it. And uh for folks to think otherwise, well, uh that's their opinion.
Okay, uh look, just a moment, okay, that's fine. You you have some breaks, okay, so is that it?
Uh I I just wanna remind.
Well, Council, Mr. City Attorney, I just wanna make sure for clarifications when we're talking about these discussion items. We're talking about, the discussion needs to be germane to what the discussion action item is. And uh sometimes there's like we sidetrack. So we just need to address this and if you guys are gonna make some suggestions, please uh do those. At your staff reports. Uh so, but uh Mr. City Attorney, you have some of uh. We have consensus on Councilwoman Valentine's items. And you you received a couple of directives from Councilwoman Angie Reyes English, correct?
I have, and I was just gonna say, let's not stray too much off of the topic, so.
There you go.
Thank you.
We just really need to, and and you know, everybody has their opinion and. The residents have their opinion and if they're asking for transparency, maybe we just have to educate them. Maybe we just have to let them know.
I like that, thank you, Mayor. I like that, yeah.
No, but it is, it it really is.
Thank you.
Everybody, everybody has their, they have their opinions and uh, you know, they're expressing themselves, that's it. Councilmember Montero, item number thirty, please. Sir? Councilman Montero, you're muted, sir?
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh yeah, um actually, this item came out of the uh ad hoc committee for the economic development. Um that we met and it was a very thorough discussion and and we actually did a lot of progress on that meeting. Uh more things to come soon. But I wanna give a directive to uh Mr. Norris and Mr. Kim and potentially involve the uh. All the parties that are interested on this is to come up with expedite processing fee. Like say for the building and safety, planning, whatever that is necessary to move project quickly. And then they will pay a fee, an extra fee, so we could have more staff working on the particular project. That would move it swiftly to the process and not take uh forever. So a lot of cities have that expedite processing fee. So I want uh Mr. Norris to investigate in with how with the city attorney to come up with a recommendation for us to to do the expedited processing fees. That's it.
Yep, thank you, sir. Great recommendation. Uh I think you have concurrence, nobody's opposed. Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Patterson, item thirty-one?
I thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I I put this on the agenda because last council meeting, there's a a talk about. Uh joining in on the lawsuit uh against the state um regarding SB nine and SB ten. And so I wanted to talk about that and I believe we have uh some outside counsel. To to talk about that as well. One of the things I believe Mr. Kim had outlined is the cities that are suing. Um trying to um fight SB nine and ten, what they all have in common are charter cities. Uh I believe the the argument is that they uh as a charter city, they they shouldn't apply to them. And I'll let the the attorneys give the specifics. And so to my understanding, to my knowledge, for us to um. For it to ma- like we want to join in on such a lawsuit or benefit from the uh positive result of of such a suit. Um it only matter for a charter city. Uh is that is that accurate?
So so the topic for this particular discussion action item is two, basically, is is questions and answers regarding charter cities. Uh any questions that the council may have? We have Mr. Snow present here. Uh he's from the law firm of Richi Wason Gershon. The firm has extensive experience in providing charters for different cities that went charter. Um and also he will address um your questions regarding the lawsuit. For the advantages of a charter city in a lawsuit for challenging the SB nine particularly. So, Mr. Snow?
Uh thank you, Mr. Kim. Uh Mr. Mayor, uh Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, my pleasure to be here this evening. Um maybe I'll start uh immediately with the land use question. Um under a charter, a charter city. Uh charter cities would have the authority, broad authority to exercise municipal affairs. Uh the chief limitation on that, other than the federal and state constitutions, would be matters of statewide concern. Um that is the the issue that some of the charter cities um that um seem to be looking at filing challenges to Senate Bill nine. Um would be uh arguing that really there should be the the latitude for charter cities. Uh to be immune from that type of land use regulation. Um generally speaking, when looking at whether um something uh would be a municipal affair. The first question is, um is there a conflict between state and local law? Here, there there certainly would be between the land use. Um regulations of a city and uh the uh state law SB nine in particular. Um next is uh does that local law implicate a municipal affair? Land use generally is considered um a municipal affair. The third third step uh in the court's analysis would be whether the state law involves something of statewide concern. And here, um the there is some case law uh over the last several years where courts have found that housing issues. Um do constitute uh something of statewide concern. Um and then the fourth step is whether the state statute is reasonably related and narrowly tailored. To a to the resolution of that statewide concern. And there, I think there would be room for us charter cities to argue that that this SB nine in particular doesn't. Uh achieve those standards. It doesn't really address affordable housing. There's no affordability requirement. Um, and other arguments they, that, that may might, they might make. Um, and that is different than general law cities, which w- would be subject to the general laws of the state. Um, that said, I understand that some general law cities may also be looking at filing litigation to challenge S B nine. Um, and the arguments would certainly be different. Um, I think there's more to say if you're a charter city because of that reservation of municipal affairs. So certainly stronger arguments and more to say if, if, for charter cities than general law cities. And uh, you know, time will tell if these lawsuits are, are filed, what the, what the uh, arguments are that end up uh, being included in those. Um, as a note, S B ten is actually uh, an optional uh, piece of legislation. So it allows for some um, additional intensification of zoning, um, and some streamlined sequel review, et cetera. Um, that's optional, so I ha- I'm not really focusing on that because a city doesn't have to do that. Whereas uh, as it currently stands, S B nine would uh, apply to all cities throughout.
Do you repeat what S B nine pretty much says, like summarize it?
Sure, S- uh, S B nine is the bill that basically requires cities to ministerially approve. Um, uh, duplexes on single-family uh, lots throughout the state. Um, and split uh, single-family lots into two lots, an urban lot split. Um, and in addition, there's the possibility of accessory dwelling units and um, junior accessory dwelling units. So there could be as many as four units on what we would traditionally uh, view as a single-family uh, uh, property. Uh, under current law, that also could uh, entail a, an accessory dwelling unit, of course. Um, so that, in, in a nutshell, um, and there, there are uh, certain standards and whatnot that local agencies are allowed to impose. But the gist of it is have to, have to approve these types of intensifications of uses uh, in our single-family residential areas.
So I, I have another question, um, is it possible to craft like a narrow charter that covers just so they say a, a couple of specific areas? Including, you know, land use, you know, I'm just throwing out a couple of things. Uh, land use, uh, prevail, how we, how we pay prevailing wages. Um, how we pass ordinances, like, you know, can we create a charter that addresses a few things? Including this land use issue and default everything else to the general law?
Um, yes, Mayor Potem, I think that is an option. Um, the way I kind of view or would articulate a charter. Um, is a charter would establish that the, the charter city has all authority. Uh, un- to, to make laws with respect to municipal affairs. Um, then the question becomes, are there any limitations on that broad, super broad authority? That the city would want to write into the charter. Um, in order to address issues that may be of concern in a particular community. So i- in some respects, a limitation um, on, a self-imposed limitation on that municipal affairs, uh, the breadth of that. So that it, it again, addresses things that may be of concern in a particular community. Um, and I think that also helps articulate the need for and the importance of a charter. Um, which of course, needs to be voted on by the voters, so something that uh, I think some cities look at the, the. Adding other, other provisions in order to address concerns of voters. Um, and to uh, hopefully, if that's the direction, uh, get a successful vote at the ballot box.
So is something that the, the council couldn't pass, we would have to uh, put it on the ballot for the, the community to decide?
Absolutely.
Um, shoot, there's a couple of other questions I have regarding this. Oh, I, I, we, we, I got some information. Uh, that gave a general range of what it might cost to draft a charter, somewhere between, you know, twenty-five thousand upwards to seventy-five thousand. Um, is that a accurate range?
I would say so, um, but it really, it's gonna depend on the complexity of the charter. Um, and the more provisions, the more complexity, then the cost goes up. So, it's a kind of a sliding sale, but I said, it's a reasonable uh, ballpark to expect for.
Could you explain like what a complex charter would look like versus a less complex charter? Especially as it relates to kind of what we're talking about here?
Um, I think, you know, if you have a, a complex uh, prevailing wage provision. If you have complex land use provisions that would be uh, different than say, general, the general law. Uh, under, under state law. Um, if you wanted to have a uh, unique e- election process. That differs from election law. Um, if, so there are a number of different uh, provisions or, or things that could be written into a charter. And really, it's gonna depend on, you know, the, the, the council. Um, and the pu- the public, who would have the opportunity to weigh in on this at public hearings before uh, would be put to a vote. Or before the council could uh, put it to a vote of, of the, of the electorate. Um, and so there would be, you know, opportunity for folks to, to, to weigh in on that and perhaps suggest other uh, things to be included as well.
Could you, um, could you go into detail about what that process would be to get a charter on the ballot? Did you say in public hearings?
Um, yes, there, the require, there would be two public hearings that would be required. Um, and so that uh. That basically one is, you know, we're, we're working on a charter. The second is what are the provisions in that charter? Um, there has to be thirty days in between those hearings at least. There's also a noticing requirement of twenty-one days in advance of each of those. There is a twenty-one day period after that second hearing before the council could vote to submit the uh, matter to the electorate. Then after that, there are timeframes uh, uh, with respect to um, making sure that that process is completed in time. At least eighty-eight days before a statewide election. Um, the matter would have to be heard at a statewide election. The next one um, is in uh, November of twenty twenty-two.
Is there enough time, if that was something that the council wanted to do?
Um, I would say there might be enough time. It's going to be a tall order. You'd need to get going soon. Um, really, from a schedule that, a draft schedule that we had looked at. Um, the draft charter and the sequel review, cuz it could, we'd have to review the provisions of the charter. And determine what level of review under the California Environmental Quality Acts might be required. Um, but really, that should be completed by early, um, beginning of June in order to meet the hearing requirements. And wrap all of that up uh, in time to make the November twenty twenty-two uh, election.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are we good?
Um, I mean, I had a request, but I want to let everybody else talk.
Let me see who we got here, raising their hand. Oh, okay, it's Councilwoman English. You're muted.
Mr. Snow, thank you so much for the information you provided. Um, are you finding that more and more cities are changing their charter?
You know, I, I, I don't know. Uh, I, at this point, I think there's a lot of conversation. Um, in light of the, the changes uh, in state law that have been continuing, continuing to erode. Um, local land use authority in particular. So I think there's a lot of conversation about that. Um, I, I think there may be some hesitancy to go down that road. Because at this point, there is case law that establishes that these housing issues as of statewide concern. So it's, I don't, I don't think a charter is necessarily a silver bullet to that. Uh, and again, as I talked about the analysis for S, S B nine, we really get into the last part of that analysis. And that's the scope and the, the uh, how the, the legislation is crafted. And is it really addressing the concerns, uh, the stated concerns that this, the state has said, affordable housing as an example? Uh, but I think it's definitely something that cities are going to uh, continue, uh, continue to look at. In light of the continued uh, encroachment on uh, local, local land use authority in particular.
So, from what I understand, a mandate is a mandate is a mandate, whether you are a general or a charter. Um, is that correct?
If it is a matter of statewide concern, then generally speaking, yes, that is correct. And that's, that's the question. Is this going to, is, is something that the state, uh, you know, a legislation the state passes? Is that going to fit in the category of statewide concern, in which case it would apply to general and charter cities alike? Or is it not, and is it really a municipal affair, in which case charter cities would have greater latitude to deviate from that state mandate?
If we're mandated to create more housing, isn't that our charge?
Um, again, at this point, there has been case law that has the recent case law and, and some older case law. That the courts have been finding that the housing issues, the housing crisis and the various housing bills that have been passed. Over the last several years, um, that those do consti- not constitute a matter of statewide concern. And therefore, uh, those, uh, the, the bills or the, the legislation that has been tested along those lines. The courts have been uh, upholding the determination or finding that they are, that is a matter of statewide concern on housing is- issues.
I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, there, there are, a- as I touched on, I think there are gonna be different arguments that will be made with respect to uh, S B nine. In the event this litigation moves forward.
Okay, uh.
I would like to.
I, I have other, one other remark, but I'll pause until I remember what I was gonna say. Thank you.
Councilman, uh, Councilmember Montero or Mayor Potem, do you wanna respond to that? And then make Councilmember Montero?
I'd defer, I'd defer to Councilmember Montero.
Uh, 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 thank you, Mr. May. Um, thank you, Mr. Davis Snow for coming in. Uh, on the same thought about the, the statewide concern versus the municipalities, right? Those cases were tested on the um, California Supreme Court? Or they were tested at the Supreme Court level in, in D C?
Um, no, not, not the United States Supreme Court. Um, there are, I, I think most of the cases are really appellate level courts in California.
And do you see potentially that's uh, S B nine go all the way to the Supreme Court?
Um, the California Supreme Court possibly. I don't think the United States Supreme Court. Cuz I think really this is a, a, a function of the state of California, state laws and state, um, in the California constitution. I don't think it's a federal constitutional question, so I don't know that it would reach the United States Supreme Court.
Okay.
Um, and uh, creative litigators, however, may, may find an avenue to try and get there. But, uh, but I, I would think that this would probably be a California uh, type of litigation.
My next question is about the, the provision wages, because, for example. Um, most of the federal government contracts and also the state contracts sometimes dictate to have prevailing wages. According to the state or the federal government, correct?
Correct.
So that would not be something that we would protect change in our charter city if we put it, if we go that way?
No, the, the charter uh, basically sets rules for the jurisdiction. But if there are preemption or uh, funding requirements, for example, for state and federal dollars, that it has to be prevailing wages. Then that's not something that could be changed by the charter. You do raise an interesting point about prevailing wage. Um, that is something that uh, the courts have found to be a matter, uh, a municipal affair. Um, and it, it also points out that the state still has some tools at its disposal to uh, to meet its end objective. So, uh, there was again a case that, that found that prevailing wages was a municipal affair. Um, the state thereafter passed legislation that basically said, you don't get any funding unless your projects pay prevailing wage. So, the power of the purse. I mean, that's something that, that the legislature, um, you know, could, can still try and do it. In, in other contexts as well. So it's, it's an interesting point that you raised there, Councilmember Montero.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay, who else? All right, uh, Mayor Potem, you're good?
Yeah, I will actually, uh, I think something we should, we should pursue. I think it can um, do nothing but aid us. Especially in our desire to uh, have greater local control. Um, I wanna, you know, bring it up to the council to instruct the city, city manager to um, you know, work with. Uh, was it Richard Watson, Watson Gershon, and putting together charter for the council to, to consider and send to the ballot.
So this is an item, uh, it's on discussion action, uh, as Mr. Snow has presented. There is a time limitation, um, with the city council needs to. Either at this meeting, we could do it now as this discussion action, or we could bring it back at the next council meeting. But it should be decided upon fairly quickly if we want to um, uh, direct staff to have. Uh, Richard Watson Gershon start drafting the charters and have set up hearings and whatnot. Um, there is a time deadline that all of this should be somewhat accomplished by uh, beginning of June. Or in the May. Um, and um, you know, it's, it's, it, it takes sequel analysis to public hearing. So they're really, i- if we want to have something on the ballot by November. This is something that we really don't have that much time to um, discuss on and on. So, I s- I would recommend that either council uh, decide at this moment, it's, it is a discussion action. Uh, you could take an action on it right now, or, or if you prefer to at least by the next council meeting to take a vote on.
Um.
Councilmember Valentine, go ahead.
Yes, I would, I would prefer to um, to table this until the next council meeting. And have us uh, do some thought. I would also like to ask the city attorney if he would give us um. Uh, his view on whether we should go this route, with the pros and cons of being a charter city versus not being a charter city. What would be his view as to the advantages that we would, that, that we would have if we were a charter city? Versus the disadvantages to uh, to going this route? So, I would like to um, to ask the city attorney to, to bring us that discussion. And uh, we, and that we vote the next time.
I just, just, I, I did already do a proper presentation on the advantages and advantages of going charter. So, if you want, I, I could, uh, you know, I still have it saved, so we could. If you need a reminder, I could go back through that presentation. Um, but. Uh, anyways, it's, it's up to you.
I would like, I would like to have you uh, review that for us and uh, before we make the final decision.
Hey, 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 don't interrupt, but I, you know, my understanding is we can make the charter as specific or as broad as we want. So we can still be essentially adhered to general law, with the exception of a couple of items specifically. We're talking about, you know, land use, it might be one, maybe another two items that we would include and then have a, a narrowly drawn charter. So really, nothing changes except for the fact that we have greater control of our land use and maybe, you know, a couple of other items that the council might decide.
So what's gonna happen here, look, council, I have a, Councilmember Montero, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I was gonna say, you know, what just Mr. Kim just said, that we did have that the pros and cons about few, few meetings ago. Uh, the idea uh, of having maybe a charter city that is not so complex, right? Just make it uh, uh, less complex and, and like Mr. Perrin saying, maybe in there is some areas. That we could take charge in our destiny, because we have a state legislator out there. That is gonna keep passing these laws uh, to intrude in our municipal laws. Because they don't, uh, in Sacramento, there is no opposition to one party. Just think about that, okay? Because, cuz right now, we, you got a legislator and a governor that uh, is trying to take. All these powers away from the municipal uh, municipality. So, just think about that too, because I would prefer to see maybe what a simple charter is. Uh, for us, and then, then we could have the discussion, and then we can vote it to go to put on the ballot or not.
Okay, all right, I, I'll concur, I'll take that, let's, let's get that information. So I, I guess we have a three people that are interested in just uh, seeing the, some more information from the city attorney.
So for clarification, um, you want to bring it back as a discussion action item? But you want a report on what simple charters with just accepting the general laws as part of the charter? It, is that what the direction was? I, I just need to know.
That's what I would like, Mr. Kim, is to have like, maybe uh, a draft of something that it shows a, 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 a. A simple charter uh, bases on, okay, municipal lo- laws, uh, um, states, general laws. And also the, the, what the charters could be hot for the best fit Hawthorne. Because we don't wanna drive away completely from the general laws, state, but we can still have the power of, of a charter. To override the state mandate like S B nine or some other that's coming down the line.
But is, isn't that what Richard Watson Gershon would, would do?
Yes, yes.
So, I, I wanna be clear, are we asking the city attorney to together another? Report, reiterating what you said before, are we looking for Richard Watson Gershon to, to put together a charter for us to cons- consider?
Preliminary?
That's what I would like to see.
It sounds like it's a preliminary view of what something would, as opposed to something preliminary draft. Not, not necessarily about a preliminary view, just to see if it's even worth paying all that money to uh, have them. Have a formal, uh, create a formal charter that we would vote on. We still need to see, we, we still need to see the benefits, man, I'll be honest.
It was a sample.
Yeah, uh, we need to, we still need to see the benefits. I'm not ready to debate this fully right now.
This is why I, this is why I was asking Mr. Kim if he could give us um. This is why I, this is why I was asking Mr. Kim if he could give us, um, not, it not necessarily the repeat of the presentation, but his view of what, of whether this would be beneficial to our city of, 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 uh, of the pros and cons of being a charter city versus not a non-charter, a general law city. Okay?
Alright.
Um, yeah, that's fine with me. I just wanna confirm that we have, if that's something council wants to do, that we have the time for, uh, another meeting of discussion before we can have something in front of us in time to get it on the ballot.
So I, I think Mr. Snow has something to add.
I was just gonna say, I'm glad to work with, uh, uh, city attorney Kim to bring back some additional information and we can look around for some examples and include perhaps the next time some actual charters from some other cities. So the, the council can look at that, um, cause that, I think that might, might be helpful and we can look at it kind of an array of different types of charters. Um, and eventually we will certainly need guidance from the council on, on what kinds of things we need to be drafting in a charter. Um, and again, probably, uh, input from the council and council would consider what kind of input it might want to try and draw from the, the community as well. Uh, again, looking at them as being the final, final arbiters of this and, and approving it, uh, of something at, at, at the ballot box.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Well said. Thank you.
We did the appointment of our Mayor Pro Tem and other representatives to the various organizations.
Thank you, Mr. Snow.
So.
My pleasure, thank you.
We have a closed session. Let's just, let's, let's briefly go through our elective reports and recommendations. Since we have a closed session, um, let's just keep that in mind and stay as brief as you can. Mr. City Treasurer?
Good evening, everyone. Uh, great meeting, a lot of good discussion. Um, just wanted to, uh, you know, say, uh, it's kinda interesting about the housing authority. I, I mean, I, I don't know if they're like separate housing authorities out here, but, uh, it seems like it's, it's kinda complicated having a city also do the housing authority, uh, but, cause it just seems like, you know, maybe be handled better as a separate entity. Uh, sort of thing, but just, that was one thing I was thinking about. Uh, the talk about the chartered city seems, uh, I don't know, seems a bit extreme when it's, I mean, I get it for the lawsuit, but it's also got all these other ramifications besides just, uh, you know, this participating in a lawsuit, which is I guess the main driver. Uh, cause it's good if it's run well and then it could be bad if it's, you know, not run well, sort of, you know, whoever's elected later on, things like that. Um, and then other than that, uh, that's all I have to say. Cheers.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. City Clerk?
Alright, I'll keep mine brief. So first of all, I wanna thank everyone watching from home. Uh, first of all, we wanna, uh, wanna just share that we provided produce to about four hundred families, um, last Saturday. And, um, we're gonna be out there again this Saturday and not only will we be providing produce, but we'll be providing a box of ten N ninety-five face masks to each family that shows up. Um, in regards to COVID nineteen, again, if you haven't, please get vaccinated. It cannot only save your life, but those around you. Um, and if you're eligible, please get your booster. Uh, for information on locations to get vaccinated or your booster, go to vaccinate LA county dot com. Um, and then I wanna thank our city clerk team as well as the city staff has stepped up recently to help us out during the recent transition. Um, I really wanna thank Diana, she's done a lot for our office, um, as well as our other colleagues who have been helping us out, including Bobby, David and Maria. Um, and I wanna thank Vaughn, he's been helping us out and getting that support. But, uh, we're also looking forward to having more consistent, long-term staff, uh, to serve city hall and the community as best as possible. Uh, with that said, happy Black History Month and have a good night, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. City Clerk. Um, we'll go to, we're gonna, we're gonna go to Council, Councilwoman Olivia Valentine.
Thank you.
She's in the council member column now. Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
Uh, because of the staff shortages, we have incurred a backlog in preparing minutes for city council and for various significant committees. So I am directing the city manager to hire a professional to transcribe minutes of the city council meetings and several others, including the planning commission, civil service commission and the cannabis working committee. Um, we must be able to provide information to the public when they ask for it. And at this point, um, we are have, we have, we have a significant backlog. And so I think we can only cure that by actually taking, um, taking drastic measures, by actually hiring someone to come out and do the transcriptions. Um, Black History Month, um, Black History Month is an annual celebration of achievements by African Americans and a time for recognizing their central role in US history. Also known, known as African American History Month, the event grew out of Negro History Week, which was the brainchild of noted historian Carter G. Woodson and other prominent African Americans. Since nineteen seventy-six, every US president has officially designated the month of February as Black History Month. Other countries around the world, including Canada and the United Kingdom, also devote a month to celebrating black history. If you will log on to history dot com, you will find a wealth of information on African Americans, including videos and stories describing important historical milestones in black history. So I urge you to, uh, do your own research and digging and find out as much as you can about black history. Um, because it's, it's, it's an amazing journey, um, that we have taken in this country. Um, I want to thank the community for coming out and expressing their views on cannabis. We are listening to you. We are always conscious of what we are doing, of whether what we are doing is what the residents want. And so, um, I, I applaud you for coming out and expressing your points of view. Thank you so much. Um, and that is all I have. Thank you and good night.
You're muted, Mr. Mayor.
Council, okay, I'm so sorry. Councilmember Angie raised English first and then, and then Councilmember, uh, Montero in succession, okay?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to, uh, congratulate, uh, all of our Hawthorne workforce who completed the customer service program offered by WIB. And thank you to WIB for assisting us with the customer service program and your partnership. Um, I also wanna make mention that, uh, we had a fire over the, uh, a week ago and, um, here at the Hawthorne Mall, uh, I hope that the lawsuit that the city has made against the owners is successful and will once and for all abate this nuisance property for years and to, and too far along. The residents of Hawthorne who have lived near the property have suffered at the hands of those with no regard to the quality of life, including the residents' health and well-being. And, uh, I truly, um, stand behind how our city is moving and, um, look forward to a suc- suc- successful resolve. Three, um, our testing in Hawthorne continues and has been well received. Hawthorne residents have been, um, test, you know, testing is available to you at, in your backyard. That provides easy access and test and, and most importantly, uh, a fast response. And I do hope that residents take advantage of the testing center, uh, at the memorial center. Uh, let me just wish everyone a happy Valentine's Day. Um, to my daughters and to my seven grandbabies, happy, happy Valentine's Day and, uh, I love you mucho. Uh, congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem David Patterson on your appointment this evening. And, uh, lastly, go Rams. I hope that we're successful and we pull it off. And if we do, be careful, people, be careful. I'm just saying that literally because you know what happens at games, right? We just need to be vigilant, be careful and please don't destroy what, you know, takes so long to put up, right? Years and money's worth of property. That's not cool, so be safe and, uh, be kind. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Montero?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. City Clerk, I might go over my ten minutes, so give me a, a break, okay?
It's actually five, but go for it.
Uh, first, I wanna, uh, say again, thank you, uh, to all the staff, to all the outstanding report that we received tonight and, and all the work that's behind, uh, the scenes of all the staffs out there. So thank you very much from the City Clerk office to all of them. I wanna thank Steve Ishi, uh, to bring those fine office to, to us. Uh, and I was happy to know that the majority of them live in the City of Hawthorne, okay? That's what I want. I want them to work and live here. And we're gonna do everything possible to make sure that they live comfortable and they are safe also. So thank you very much for that. Uh, Black History Month, actually, thank you, Ms. Valentine, for, for, for bringing it up again. Uh, but I wanna, I wanna, uh, ask you all my colleagues for, for no one, every year when we celebrate Black History Month or the Hispanic Heritage Month, is that maybe we can highlight one or two people from our community, like from Hawthorne or LA County or even the state of California. Highlight those that have make an impact in our community, especially they have accomplished something. So, um, I wanna put it on the agenda next, next meeting on the twenty-second, uh, to highlight two gentlemen that have done outstanding, uh, job for our community. Uh, so I wanted to do a presentation and give them some, uh, uh, proclamation on their achievement. Uh, and they grew up in Hawthorne, they, they have done outstanding, but I don't wanna give it away. So I just wanted to get your blessing to put, uh, two proclamation on the presentation about these two gentlemen in the next meeting. Oh, you mute, Ms. Valentine?
Sounds good.
Could we add more people?
Well, I have two.
We have more than two?
I did have a list of a lot of people, but I select two this year so that we can build on. But if you have anybody in mind.
Just two?
Huh?
Why does it have to be just two?
Well, it, it, it's because what they have done, I think this is a first step and then we can build up on that for next year or the year after. But if you have anybody in mind, you can just, you know, bring it up.
I don't have anybody, anybody in mind at the moment, but I, I'm certain that there are people in Hawthorne that, uh, well, that, that have made great contributions.
Yeah, so I did, I did receive about six bios and then I select from the five, I select two that I think this year will be the worthy to do highlight.
So, um.
I'm just asking, cause I don't wanna make it be longer, because you know, we got ten minute presentation, uh, limit, so I wanted to give those two gentlemen.
Yeah, that sounds good.
That's fine. That's fine. That's fine.
Thank you very, I appreciate, I appreciate that.
If you can model it for us.
Yes, so we can do that for any type of o- other culture dur- during the upcoming year. The other thing that I wanna, uh, mention to the residents of Hawthorne, uh, the Clean Power Alliance, remember we vote, uh, uh, to go one hundred percent green. So, uh, don't be alarmed because the, um, that's not gonna start until October. But the, the, um, Southern California Edison did not bill, uh, the customers for the month of December. So January bill, your electric bill is gonna look higher or you have received already because I got some phone calls. So your bill is high in January because you were not billed for the electric bill in December. So Southern California put those two together and that's why you saw an increase in your bill, okay? The other good news from the Clean Power Alliance is that they received about fifteen million dollar to basically to help fifty-five thousand residents who fall behind their bills from two thousand nineteen all the way to twenty twenty-one. If they were behind, they didn't pay their electric bills, so those bills is gonna be wiped out. So you would not owe no money if you're Clean Power Alliance customer. If you, if you didn't pay your bill because you, because of COVID, because you were out of job. So, so those, those, uh, past due is gonna be clean. So you would not owe no money, uh, in the starting this February, okay? So you'll start fresh again. Um, the other thing that I wanna say, uh, thank you to, uh, Vaughn and the city attorney and the chief of police and for you guys to, uh, come up with the strategy, how to go deal with those low riders in our street. Because I got a lot of phone calls this past weekend that was low riders riding, I don't know, from Crenshaw to, uh, to Rose Grand and a lot of people calling me to find out what's going on over there, you know, they're making a lot of noise, blah, 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 blah. So I'm glad that we have a plan to deal, uh, with the issue, so thank you for the email. Um, the other thing that I wanna mention too, uh, especially, uh, if Ms., um, English want to participate on the tenth, next Thursday, we're gonna have a planning committee meeting for the providers fair, early and Barney breakfast. So, uh, it's gonna be a Zoom meeting, I believe, and it's gonna be at one thirty, correct Vaughn?
Yes, that's correct. Um, I can send that, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
No, I can send that invitation out if needed.
So, because we're gonna start planning for these events, so, so. Uh, I just have to mention about our callers. Thank you for the petition. And I, and my hat goes off to the people a hundred and nineteen that we receive, but I agree with Ms. English, that those petitions should have, uh, physical address, okay? Uh, residents of Hawthorne is welcome to express your opinion and we are listened. But also the people of Hawthorne elect us to make tough decisions, okay? To be a politician, you have to have courage to make controversial decision that benefit the entire community. The whole, all constituent, not just the few. And City of Hawthorne, we have to begin to do things different. We are not in nineteen hundreds, we're not in twenty century, no, we are in twenty-first century. There is a new dawn in all around us. Other cities are prospering because they change laws. They make possible for people to build their business, create new business. And if Hawthorne, if, if we, your council people, do not look into possibility to bring revenues to the city, this city will fail. Because you don't see too many people coming up, open, uh, shopping malls or restaurants. Where we were going to get more revenues to pay our police office, to pay our court enforcement, to pay our staff. We have to diversify. We need to look into all possibilities. And we are going to do things on a safe and prosper and transparent way. And I tell people that, keep calling us, keep sending petitions, but you elected us to make this decision to benefit entire city, entire residents and for the people of Hawthorne. And you have to remember, if we keep taxing the homeowners, there are only twenty-seven percent homeowners in City of Hawthorne, twenty-seven percent. All the other people are renting. If we keep pushing, pushing, pushing for people to pay more tax, people are gonna run away. So we need to create other opportunities, other revenues, how to bring money to Hawthorne. And if we sit down and do nothing, we're gonna see the dispensary open all around us. Because Hawthorne is surrounded by non-incorporated area. And you're going to see dispensary open across the street that we cannot control. Our police department can go there and shut them down because they're part of the county. But we're going to spend the resources that we don't have to make those neighborhoods safe, from Holly Park to Holly Glen, Ramona Track. We're going to use money that would be to protect our neighborhoods, to protect others outside our area. Because the state eventually is gonna give money for those cities that have cannabis program to help for security. So think about that. When you come and accuse us, and I challenge anyone out there, if you think you can do better job than Montero, please run for office in November. Because I'm not afraid. I was elected to do a job and I think I am doing it. If you think I'm not, you can vote me out. But I challenge you because people don't think that we over here, all five of us are working very hard to make Hawthorne a better place for us, for our future and for our children. I live in this town. I'm a homeowner. So I have my best interest for the City of Hawthorne and not just, just a few. And my colleagues out there that is stirring the pot and be behind the mask, step up and take the courage and be the person that you elected to be for the entire City of Hawthorne, not just a few. And God bless. Oh, actually, I have a good news. Valentine, on Friday, November, uh, November, Friday. Valentine, on Friday, November, uh, November, Friday, the February eleventh, at six o'clock at Hawthorne Moose Lodge, you can have a Valentine dinner for two, for only twenty-five dollars. Come down, twenty-five dollars, you can eat fish or steak. So you can bring your couple or your significant other and have a nice dinner, safe place, and you'll have an outstanding Valentine. And Super Bowl on Sunday, we're going to have Super Bowl brunch, twenty-five dollars. From eleven to two P.M. is brunch. You're going to have from, from ceviche to canasada, chicken asada, everything, eggs, twenty-five dollars, and you'll have mimosas, a pitcher of mimosas, okay?
I might have to come to that one, I might have.
Twenty-five dollars, Super Bowl brunch, and then after two o'clock in the afternoon is happy hour. So come on down, so Hawthorne, we have places like Hawthorne Moose Lodge, that is a member organization, nonprofit dedicated to the orphaned children and seniors. So come support, and you'll have fun right here in your city, you don't need to go to Inglewood, Hogardini. So please help Hawthorne, please help us, and give us your ideas, give us your goal for the city. If you think I said, if you think you can do better job than me, run for office in November, November eighth, twenty-twenty-two. And God bless and good night.
Mayor Pro Tim, Mayor Pro Tim Patterson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, first, I want to just thank the, uh, the mayor and my council colleagues for appointing me to Mayor Pro Tim, I appreciate it. Want to, uh, talk to the eleven people that are watching the council meeting right now, and the, uh, the additional one hundred and fifty views we're probably going to get after the council meeting is over, I want to thank everybody for, uh, calling in and making your voices heard, sending your petitions in, um, you know, that, that's what makes a good government, is people voting, people speaking up, people making their voices heard, I always appreciate that. Um, and definitely, you know, I listen, um, and, and take your, um, comments to heart. Want to say Happy Black History Month. Uh, I also want to ask that we, I have somebody to recommend that we put a proclamation together for, not necessarily for Black History Month, but, um, it's a, a resident that, that passed away recently, and some family members reached out to me, and, um, uh, their family members would get a, have a, we get a lot out of a proclamation signed by the entire council. So her name is, uh, Mrs. Elizabeth Mosley. I'm not sure if you guys know who she is or not, um, lived over in Holly Park. But I'll be, uh, yeah, Mosley, but I'll be, uh, getting a bio together for her, and, uh, putting in a proclamation for the council to, to sign, and just recognize her contribution to the community. Uh, what else, what else? Regarding our city-owned property, uh, it's really important to me that we aren't slum lords, I'm not saying that we currently are, but I don't want us to be that. We have a lot of complaints about, uh, different landlords in our city, and I, I don't want us to, to look like the landlords that we're, we're complaining about. So, uh, I would definitely want to see, of course, that initial five hundred, five hundred thousand dollars that we've already allocated to upgrade those properties done, but make sure that it, it's before the council to approve another five hundred thousand dollars for the next tranche of ARPA funds, to go towards, you know, upgrading those properties, and put them in, in just a, just a proper condition. Yeah, Happy Valentine's Day. Be safe on Super Bowl Sunday. And again, you know, just want to encourage everybody to continue to, to, uh, make their voices heard. I like that my council colleagues love, uh, standing up for the residents of Hawthorne, and just making sure that we're creating, you know, a great city. Like Ms. Montero said, revenue, economic development is the number one thing that our city needs right now. We have a lot of seeds around us blossoming, and if we don't take the right steps, we're going to be left behind. Uh, we are not a small town. Um, we are six square miles, we have a small area, we're not a small town, we have ninety thousand residents. You know, I've got the, the, you know, our budget's between, what, seventy-five and a hundred million dollars a year. Uh, we impact the entire South Bay. Uh, we're not a small town, so it's time for us to get out of that small-town way of doing things. You know, continue what we, we are doing, upgrade the way we operate within City, City Hall, and be very proactive in creating just a, a, a new Hawthorne. But thank you for my time, that's it.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, congratulations once more, sir. Okay, um, let's take a look at the, so, um, this coming Saturday, I am hosting a mass giveaway, um, courtesy of the Southwest Council of Carpenters, Local Five-Six-Two, from nine in the morning to eleven in the morning. Um, it's going to happen in conjunction, here at City Hall, and it's going to happen in conjunction with our city clerk, Paul Jimenez, his, uh, food giveaway, so, so a box of ten N-ninety-five masks are going to be given to each family or individual that comes up and gets a, a bag of groceries, and, uh, or people who just want to come up and just grab, uh, get a, uh, box of N-ninety-five. So come and join us, and it'd be good to see you guys there, all right? Uh, I'm also, I also would like for, uh, our city, my city, city council colleagues to consider, uh, ensuring that these ad hoc committee meetings and the town hall outreach meetings, that be, they be held at a time where people are able to access them, not in the middle of the day, uh, so that when they get out of the work, they could, the first stop could be these meetings, so that they can hear, uh, what the, so they can be there at the ad hoc meetings and see what's going on, well, actually, through the Zoom right now, right? Um, be able to access the ad hoc meetings live, et cetera. Um, and also to be able to, uh, be at these physical, uh, town hall outreach meetings that I think, believe are going to be in person, correct? So if, I'd just like you all to be conscious of that as we make, as we approve any of this, and just make sure that the meetings are like, maybe at six o'clock and at a reasonable time on Saturdays, okay? Also, uh, I'd like to ask the city attorney to please, uh, um, give a summary on Proposition Sixty-four, uh, give a summary of Measure C.C. for the benefit of the residents, so that they know exactly what those entail um, at the next meeting, in a presentation form. I think there, uh, there is some misinformation, but I think, uh, for the most part, there are, there, there is a lot of correct information that is out there, so I'd just like for clarification for the residents' sake. Mr. City Attorney, could you do that, please?
Done it, I will, I will, thank you.
Yeah, just kind of go through these things, and, uh, it's not a rebuke necessarily of anything anybody has said, it's just like a real, just, what is this? What do these entail? What do they say that the cities have to do? Um, what are we allowed to do? What is by choice? What is arbitrary on our part as to what to do, et cetera, so. Both Proposition Sixty-four and Measure C.C., which I think people, uh, might be mixing them up, and, uh, could you please do that, sir?
Yes, I'll, okay.
And, you know, I thank you, thank the residents for coming up and, uh, expressing themselves, and, uh, I think, uh, I also agree with my council colleagues in the sense that, um, we, anything we're doing with regards to the marijuana, to the cannabis, uh, programs, uh, it's our intention to be able to be as transparent as possible, to make sure that we follow all the rules, uh, and guidelines that are set out, and just making sure that we're, you know, we have accessibility to information. And, uh, yeah, ultimately, the city council here makes a decision as to whether to go ahead with certain things or not. So, uh, with this added information and this more additional volun, uh, uh, accessibility to the information, I think, uh, I think people should be happy, maybe not happy with, uh, the concept of cannabis itself, but at least be able to have access to this information, okay? And, uh, I'd like to commend our staff, all our staff, from, uh, the people out in, working in the streets, public works, people here in City Hall, people in the police, uh, department, all those new police officers um, out there, and, uh, everything you guys do, Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Attorney, your department heads, et cetera. Uh, we, we have some really great information, very great, uh, meetings that we've been having. And all my council colleagues, every single one of you guys, um, we're, uh, everybody's contributing feedback. We, we agree, like I said, in actuality, if you really think about it, we agree on ninety-five to ninety-eight percent of the things here, right? That's the reality, it's the two percent that everyone gets all weird about, right? But, um, thank you guys for your contributions, okay? And, uh, Mr. City Attorney, or Mr. City Manager, we have a closed session, um, and, uh, I'll go ahead and read it, I'll read it myself this time. So, uh, we have a closed session in conference, a conference with legal counsel on anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to subdivision D-two of Section five four-nine, five-six-point-nine of the California Government Code, Claim of Hawthorne Airport LLC, which was received on August twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one, available for public inspection at Hawthorne City Clerk's Office, four-four-five-five West One-Twenty-Six Street, Hawthorne, California, nine-oh-two-five-oh. Are there any members of the public that would like to address Item Thirty-four?
No, there are not.
Okay. Seeing none, if there's no objections, I'll declare oral communications closed, so ordered. We will now recess the city council meeting to conduct a closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda at, uh, what time, uh, nine-oh-two? And for the residents out there, once we come out of this, we're just going to vote on this simply, and there's not going to really be many more comments after that, so you guys can just, uh, maybe even just go to bed and get ready for bed or something, but you guys can stick with us, okay? We are in recess.
When you're interacting with others who are not members of your household in both public and private spaces, wear a cloth face covering. Before you put it on, wash your hands or sanitize them. Before you take it off, make sure your hands are clean. And after you take it off, wash your hands again. Wash your cloth face coverings often, wear a clean one every single day. Learn more at publichealth.lacounty.gov.
Hello, I'm Gloria Gray, President of the West Basin Municipal Water District Board, where we take pride in delivering safe, reliable water to our communities.
According to the CDC, coronavirus is not transmitted through water.
West Basin works diligently to protect the quality and reliability of the water supply. On behalf of the West Basin Board of Directors, we hope you and your family are staying safe and healthy.
For more information, visit westbasin.org.
Even though California is flourishing in many ways, we are also facing greater challenges than ever due to climate change. Cyclical droughts, intense fire seasons, and pollution endangers human health and the environment. In California, we're doing something about it.
Governor Jerry Brown today signed a bill regulating emissions from landfills to fight climate change.
The organics law calls on the state's forty million residents, its businesses, and every level of government to combat climate change by getting food, green waste, and other organics out of our landfills, and get more good food to the one in eight Californians, including the one in five children who are food insecure. At twenty-three million tons, organics are by far the largest material-type landfill in California each year. Fortunately, yard food and other organic waste can be recycled into compost and renewable natural gas. Thirteen eighty-three requires new rules and regulations to achieve a fifty percent reduction in organic waste disposal by twenty-twenty, a seventy-five percent reduction by twenty-twenty-five, and actions to make sure twenty percent of currently disposed edible food is redirected to Californians in need. Enforcement begins once the law takes effect on January first, twenty-twenty-two. Achieving these targets demands a new approach and substantial new investments to restructure the waste management system of the world's fifth-largest economy. CalRecycle began rulemaking immediately after the law's passage in twenty-sixteen. Jurisdictions should start planning now to meet the law's requirements.
Thirteen eighty-three will affect every resident and every business in the state of California. CalRecycle is here to help local governments understand and implement this new program.
Start planning now to connect large food waste generators with your local food recovery organizations to help feed hungry people where you live. Start planning now to expand organic waste collection to all homes and businesses in your area, and increase your local capacity to recycle this material. Start planning now for rate changes to fund these efforts, new ordinances for mandatory recycling enforcement, and changes to existing franchise agreements or hauler permits.
Some of this is new, and some of it requires more of what you've already been doing, but all of it requires planning now to make sure programs are in place by January one, twenty-twenty-two.
Recycling organic waste is an essential part of the state's strategy and one of the most cost-effective ways every Californian can reduce their own greenhouse gas footprint. Together, California will create a more sustainable future, combat climate change, feed more Californians, and improve the health of our people and our planet. CalRecycle is your committed partner in this effort. Get in touch with us to learn more about available support and resources to help you succeed, and talk to your staff about strategies for the next steps for thirteen eighty-three implementation.
The city of Hawthorne has revised the Hawthorne Municipal Code 12.04.031 pertaining to sidewalk repair and maintenance. The revised code places new duties and obligations on the property owners adjacent to sidewalks in conformance with the California Streets and Highways Code. The revised municipal code section can be found online at the website shown on the screen. A copy of Section 12.04.031 is also available from the city clerk's office. Property owners are encouraged to consult their own legal counsel or insurance companies if they have questions about the legal impact of the new code section.
...to order at 9:16 PM. We have a met and closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda, uh, listed as Item Number 34. Mr. City Attorney Kim, will you please, uh, let us know what happened?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The report, a report was provided to council and no action was taken.
Okay, thank you very much. If there's nothing further from, uh, city council members or staff or our new Mayor Pro Tem, uh, we will adjourn this meeting. Happy Valentine!
Night, everyone.
Night, goodnight, everybody.